Stream access to the recording will be made available on the district's website as soon as it's possible. Very limited space is also being provided here for the public. Looking out there, it looks like we do have one seat open, so that's good. Nice packed crowd tonight. We are utilizing medical screening questions and social distancing. Online input is encouraged and welcome. A link for this is located on our district website. Community input. As I just said, we welcome community input. Written comments from visitors must be information in nature, should address the entire board rather than one particular member, and the Board of Education cannot engage in a discussion or debate in response, but will take the information to review and obtain answers when appropriate. For tonight's meeting, we received no online community input, and no one in the lobby is having community input. Next up will be our mission statement. Our mission is to provide a safe and caring climate and culture in which we engage, inspire, educate, prepare, and empower all learners in partnership with their surrounding community to be successful in today and tomorrow society. The meeting officially is now called to order. 6:33, December 2, 2020. We're here at the DAO and some remote locations. Les, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please? Les, you out there? Are you miked?
He's not checking in.
All right. I'll lead it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Shannon, you have a roll call to perform? It should have been on your desk. All right, I'm gonna ask you to do roll call until I find where Les is. All right, Shannon, could you take roll, please? If you want to.
Jeff Horries.
Here.
Monica Seger Schwarz.
Here.
Al Dahlberg.
I'm here at the district office.
Shannon Hogs, here at the district office.
Natalie Rains Booth.
I am here at my home.
Zach Dorholt.
Present at the DAO.
And last screen is not present at the time. Also an attendant, Superintendent Lily Jett, Assistant Superintendent Elementary Education, Dr. Marshabite, Assistant Superintendent Secondary Education, Dr. Lori Clutton, Executive Director of Learning and Teaching, Lori Posh, Executive Director of Student Services and Special Education, Carol Potter, Executive Director of Research Evaluation Assessment and Enrollment, Dr. Sylvia Huff, Executive Director of Community Education, Adam Holm, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services, Amy Scalabrine, Executive Director of Operations, Ari Gange, Executive Director of Human Resources, Tracy Flynn Bow, Director of Community Engagement and Communications, Tammy Deland, Director of Equity Services, Ellen Stewart, Director of Technology, Ryan Cox, and Executive Assistant, Mary Kuesterman.
Thank you very much, Shannon. First up will be the approval of the board meeting and work session agenda. I'm looking for a motion to accept tonight's agenda as recorded.
So moved.
All right, I have a first from Natalie. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Zach. All right, Shannon, could you take roll one more time, please?
Zach Dorholt.
Yes.
Natalie Rains Booth.
Yes.
Shannon Hogs, yes. Al Dahlberg has stepped out at the moment. Monica Seger Schwarz.
Yes.
And Jeff Horries.
Yes. Thank you, Shannon. Next up is our consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of non-controversial items that the board routinely adopts without debate. Any single member of the board may remove an item from the consent agenda by requesting removal at the time the consent agenda is moved for adoption. The full text of items can be found at the end of the agenda. On tonight, we have Item A, Approval of Personnel Staff Changes; Item B, Approval of Monthly Treasuries Report for October 2020; Item C, Approval of Monthly Financial Report for October 2020; Item D, Proposed Revised Board Policy Number 740, deals with purchasing procedures. That's up for third reading; Item E is a Joint Purchasing Contract Award for the Tech High School Tennis Lighting; Item F is Call for Bids Roofing Project for Discovery Community School. I'm looking for a motion to accept the consent agenda as read. I have a motion from Zach, second from Shannon. Could you take roll, please, Shannon?
Al Dahlberg.
Yes.
Shannon Hogs, yes. Natalie Rains Booth.
Yes.
Zach Dorholt.
Yes.
Last screen is still working on logging in. Jeff Horries.
Yes.
Monica Seger Schwarz.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Shannon. Next up is Item Number Three. It's Discussion and Action Items. It looks like we have one action item on tonight. It's New High School Proposals. It's gonna be done by Executive Director of Learning and Teaching, Lori Post.
Thank you, Chair Polriis, and I'm always happy to be here to share with you new courses. So Chair Polriis, School Board Members, and Superintendent Jett, Ryan is going to pull up for me our presentation. And as we go through it tonight, like I said, this is one of my favorite things. I always love being able to talk with you about new things that we're moving forward with, but also to give you tonight a summary of the classes that you've approved the last couple of years and where we're at with those. So Ryan, you can go right to Slide Two for me. Thanks. Wanted to do a quick review of what our new course proposal process looks like every year. And in a typical year, this is the process that's followed for those new courses. Course offerings are reviewed in alignment with our curriculum review process. So a more in-depth review is done during the evaluation phase of our contents. However, as part of our ongoing review and modification, courses can be proposed as needs arise. Those courses are suggested by the list that you see on the screen in that second box. Teachers propose them. Our learning and teaching staff does as they work with our building content reps and look at data. Administrators propose suggestions for new courses. Parents and community members, and that's usually done mostly through our Learning and Teaching Advisory Committee, but we have had parents and community members reach out in the past with ideas and suggestions. And one of the things, one of our goals that we really want to do is to increase student voice in the offerings. So although we have done that informally and our teachers have gone back and talked with students, we want to really add in a more formal student voice to our process. Our application forms are typically due by October 1. This year, we were more flexible with that timeline, just knowing that our teachers and our staff were getting ready for our multiple models of instruction this year. So we were a little more lenient with that due date schedule. Once the applications are written, they go first to building principals to review because we know that our building principals are instructional leaders. That's hard to say. And our principals either give approval for the courses or they ask more questions of either the person writing the course proposal or to me or to any of our team members. Those applications then come to our learning and teaching team. They're reviewed in a small group, and then they're discussed as a full team. Considerations that we look at are budget, staffing considerations, alignment with our goals in the mission statement. And if they're approved at those levels, the application then goes on to our community and parent advisory. Want to be honest with you, that that step didn't occur this year. Our first meeting for that committee is set to be this month. And as we looked at our proposals, we felt that they were ones that could go forward without that step this year. But every other year, that's an important step, and we will be talking with that committee about ideas to bring forward for the following year as well. And then they go to the Assistant Superintendent and to the superintendent's cabinet to review before they make it to you. So let's take a look back at where we've been the last couple of years and the courses that you have approved. Two of the courses that were approved to begin in the 2019 and 2020 school year were our Certified Nursing Assistant Course and our Minnesota Wildlife Biology Course. Just to give you a little reminder, because it's been a couple of years, our CNA course is an elective course, and it's one trimester long. And this really works and focuses on the skills that are necessary to be certified as a nursing assistant. It's offered to students in grades 11 and 12, and it was started last spring at both of our high schools. And I want to draw your attention down to the little chart that's down there. So you can see in the top kind of darker box, that's our CNA class. And at Apollo, we had zero students who enrolled in the course last year, and this year we had seven students. At Tech, we had 18 last year and 22 this year. And in our Distance Learning Academy section, we have three students who are taking the CNA course. I did also add in here our Healthcare Core Curriculum course because that is an important stepping stone to our CNA program. So as you know, we work really hard on making sure that we have pathways that are available for our students. So that healthcare core curriculum is the lecture portion that's required for the certification. And then the CNA course is more the skills that are needed for that certification. So you can see that in our HCCC course at Apollo, we had 19 students in the 1920 school year, and we had 13 this year. At Tech, we had 49 and 38. But I want you to notice that at our Distance Learning Academy, we have 22 students this year involved in that. So when you add those up, our numbers have really increased over the last year. Our CNA course is taught by Sam Lewis, who is an RN and also works at St. Ben's. And our Healthcare Core Curriculum course is taught by Kristy Benson, who is an LPN. Thought it was interesting today, we received an email that updated us on DEED, or the Department of Employment and Economic Development. And they have, for the state, updated their list of the top 30 jobs in demand in Minnesota. And among those top posted positions right now, there are over 3,200 job postings for registered nurses and over 2,380 openings for CNAs. So we know that we really are helping to fill those needs in our community and our state by being able to offer these courses. We also know that EPIC, our Exploring Potential Interests and Careers, is another important piece of this pathway. Our district, as we work to create that stackable set of experiences, is offering through EPIC some health science career experiences. So as we start to have our ninth and 10th grade students introduced to things like health sciences careers, we know that, and we're anticipating, that our courses and the enrollment in our healthcare curriculum and our CNA program will continue to grow. Wanted to share with you a couple of quotes from some students that they shared as they finished up that health sciences career first rotation this year. One student said, "I really enjoyed being part of this class. It was really enjoyable and made Mondays fun for me. This class always had something new and something fun to do. I really liked using the blood pressure and the heartbeat tools." And another student said, "This class is definitely one of my favorites. I really love how hands-on and active this class is. Whether it was walking around the school or running through scenarios, there was always some way to enrich and engage us. I also enjoyed the atmosphere of the class. Maybe it was a result of the small number of students, but the lessons were always reflected back to me and my wish to be a veterinarian." So you can see that the courses, even those introductory courses, our students are really connected to. And our Minnesota Wildlife Biology Class, this is a required class, and it replaces the ninth grade biology class. So students can opt to take our traditional ninth grade biology, or they can take the Minnesota Wildlife Biology. This is a year-long course, and we started it just at Tech, but it was approved to be expanded to our other schools as well. And as I said, this is a ninth grade class that started last fall. We had three sections last year, but we had four sections this year with one of those being in our Distance Learning Academy. And I want to just read to you, when I reached out to teachers, just like I love to share with you, they love to share with us what's happening. And Angie House is our teacher of this course at Tech, and I just want to read for you what she wrote. "The classroom that I am able to use is amazing. We have a full view of the forest, and we have access to the outside, which when we were in the classroom, we were doing something outside almost every class period. This class is designed to cover the Minnesota biology standards, but it has an emphasis on the wildlife of Minnesota and also wildlife in general. COVID-19 has definitely put a damper on many of these plans, but we are adjusting. This year, we did a unit on Minnesota animals at the start of the year. We worked on being able to identify Minnesota animals, and this has been fun because they then try to identify things that they see on the site, but also what they see at home. When they were doing the microscope review, we went out to the stream and collected a water sample. We took that back to the classroom and learned how to make wet mount slides, and then we looked for microscopic organisms. It was so fun to see them so excited about what they were going to find. The goal is to use the outdoor space in any way that we can to enhance the curriculum. We also have bird feeders out. We're trying to attract different types of birds with different feeders and different types of food. I have so many ideas for this class. So many students are not connected to the outdoors and nature, and one of the best parts is getting them outside and watching them explore and using what is outside to learn biology. I'm so thankful to be able to offer these two classes," and she's talking about environmental sciences as well, "to our students. I'm looking forward to the day that we can get back into the classroom and be together to learn in person." So you can see our teachers in both of these two classes are committed and excited about what is happening. We have some pictures that Angie sent for us on the next slide. Isn't that just beautiful? So you can see in here, we have the bird feeders that she talked about down in that lower left-hand corner, and those are with turkeys that came to visit the bird feeder this year. The students in the stream are from the environmental science class, but they will be doing those things in the biology class in the spring. And last year, there's a picture of them doing a bird beak lab, and Angie says, "This one's really fun." They get a tool that represents a type of a bird beak, and they have to access a bunch of different types of food and collect as much food as they can with the bird beaks. So fun and engaging activities happening with those two new classes. And then our classes that were proposed and accepted for the 2020-21 school year were net games and guitar. Our net games course is an elective course, and it's offered for one trimester, and it's offered both at Apollo and at Tech. It is open for students in grades 10 through 12. Apollo did not begin the course this year, although it was in their handbook. And they're looking to expand and to do more outreach for students with that. But it was held this fall and last spring at Tech, and they had, and will be held this spring, sorry, at Tech. And they have 29 students that were in the fall semester with this. Sarah Hagemeister is the teacher at Tech, and she said that with the new facilities and the great fall weather, the students were able to play tennis throughout the month of September. They enjoyed being outside on the new courts with the new equipment. Some students had never had the opportunity to participate in tennis. Due to the hybrid model, students were able to participate in badminton on actual indoor courts. So once again, she says, "I had multiple students that have never had the opportunity to play." She'll be teaching the course again in the spring. And while in distance learning, many of the students have mentioned how much they really missed being there and being able to participate in the net games, so those activities for life. And then our guitar class. Jessica Shear is teaching that at Tech this year. That also is an elective. We started with one trimester, but we know that we want to, we already know that we want to expand that so that it can be offered more than one trimester. It is offered at both Apollo and Tech for students in grades nine through 12 is one of our music electives. This fall at Tech, they combined the course with songwriting, which was a course that was about three years ago adopted. And what they're finding is that the combination of the guitar, beginning guitar with that songwriting, is actually being a really good combination for the students. Jessica had 43 students involved this year. A neat addition to this guitar class, since it was a new class, we were able to do, form a community partnership with Kevin Carlson, who is a professional guitar player and teacher. And Kevin connects with Jessica and has been online with the students. What Jessica is really excited about is that along with those 43 students, there are 45% of those students who are students of color, which is one of the things that, you know, we've been working on to increase in our music offerings. She did say that distance learning has been hard on many of the students, but that they're showing up regularly and are doing a great job. She said that the program, she's really thankful that the program was given all of the resources that it needed to get off the ground. So we did purchase guitars for the students to use. We purchased footstools, the band, or the guitar consultant. And she said, "I feel confident that either myself or any of our qualified string teachers will be able to continue and grow this program in the future." And the next slide shows the happy faces of our first trimester, some of our first trimester guitar students and instructors who continued to learn when we went to virtual learning. So what are we seeking approval for for this year? We have two courses that you have been sent all of the details for. The first course is called Science of Reading Foundations, and our second is a Somali for native speakers course. So let's take a look at that Science of Reading Foundations course. This course is a course that you'll actually be hearing a little bit more about in the dyslexia presentation. This course will be offered as an elective credit, although I want to point out that we have some students who may be scheduled into that that have been identified as needing that extra support. It will be offered as a trimester-long course, but students may take it for multiple trimesters to get that additional support that they need. It will be offered at Apollo, McKinley, and Tech for students in grades nine through 12. And it really is that next step in the dyslexia legislation fulfillment, again, that you're gonna hear a little bit more about as the dyslexia presentation comes up. Budget implications for this course. We're looking at starting it off with two FTE who would go between the three buildings. Curriculum writing is projected to be about $4,000. And the materials that will be used are Orton-Gillingham-based materials, and those will be about $5,200. So at the end of this, I'll be seeking approval for that course to move forward. It really does fill a gap with some of the intervention needs at our high schools. And the second course is our Somali for native speakers course. This is an elective credit through our world language programs. It will be a year-long course and offered at Apollo, McKinley, and Tech for students in grades nine through 12. You've heard in the last couple of meetings, the presentations from both North and Apollo, about our new programming for our SLIF students, our students with limited or interrupted formal education. This course really does help build their skills and their knowledge. We have had an increase in the number of Somali students who are able to complete and achieve the Minnesota MDE bilingual seal in Somali. So that's a new offering, and our goal really is to increase that number. And this class is one of those steps in helping them to do that. That bilingual seal, we'll be telling you more about later on, but it goes right on their transcript and on their diploma and acknowledges their skills and their knowledge in two languages. So we offer that for all of our world language courses right now. We do already have a Spanish for native speakers course as well. So budget implications for this, we would ask for two FTE. Those will not be additional FTE, but will be a reallocation of our EL teaching staff. Curriculum writing is projected to be about $1,000. And then materials, again, along with supplies, would be about $1,000. So I want to open it up for any questions and then ask for approval for these two courses to be added to our handbook.
All right. Sorry about that. My mic was off. All right, tonight, it's gonna be Zach will always lead us off, followed by Al, Shannon, Les, Natalie, and Monica, then myself. So Zach, do you have any questions? All right. Al, any questions?
Is there any formal, what am I trying to say, path for suggesting courses? How do we take suggestions? What, how do we know what students are looking for? How do we know what families are looking for and such?
And I don't know if we want, Ryan, you don't have to pull the first slide up. That new course proposal process that I shared at the beginning, Al, is how the process goes. So a lot of times, it begins with our teachers and things that they're hearing students say that they're seeing as needs within their building and within their pathways. So most of the courses come forward from our teachers. We do bring this up every year with our Learning and Teaching Advisory Committee, so we seek parent and community input that way. And as I mentioned, one of our goals this year is really to add more formal student voice into it and not just those informal ways of teachers asking students what they're interested in.
I'm, okay, and I'm sorry I missed that. I was chasing down some technical difficulties when that screen was up before. That's why I didn't catch that. But I'm specifically looking at suggestions from parents. Is there any method for a parent to become involved other than being on the other committee, the curriculum advisory committee or something, but just a general parent that's concerned and is looking for something for their students, and they're not seeing it within the curriculum? How do they go about doing it?
Yep. Typically, what happens is they will reach out to me. So we have, I'd say, I've probably had two parents over the course of my time here in the district.
Can I interrupt? How would they know to reach out to you?
A lot of times, they just call the district office, and they're directed to me. So we don't have a formal way of asking or seeking for other parent input at this time.
It might be something good to look at, because I think there's a lot of really good ideas out there, and there is some things that we're missing within our curriculum and things that the community would absolutely love to see us do.
Good point.
But I don't know that there's any method for them other than trying to figure out on their own how to do it to get that information to us. It feels more forced, but forced on their part than than something that we're actively encouraging.
And reaching out. Thanks.
Just a thought on that.
Please lend in input, Al.
You good, Al? Shannon, you need it?
I have a couple questions. The guitar class, how did the need for guitars align with the number of guitars that we purchased, the district did? And how are we handling that with distance learning?
Good questions. So when the course was written, the instructors anticipated that they would need a class set of guitars. And the plan was that they would be shared between the sections. When we knew that we were going into a hybrid model and we knew that we may be moving to a distance learning, we did reach out to the teachers to see if they wanted to place additional orders for guitars. At that time, they felt like they had what they needed at Tech between what we had ordered and the ones that they had gotten from some of the other buildings who weren't using them. So for this year, we had enough to cover even when we went to distance learning. The students did take the guitars home when they went to distance learning. And the picture that you saw shows that they continued to hold the course with the instructor and with our consultant even when they were at home and online. with the instructor and with our consultant even when they were at home and online.
Okay, thank you. And then the high school reading assistance aligned with dyslexia. Can, and I apologize if you've said this before. How intentional is that to get students who need to be in there? What does that look like?
And, you know, if you want more information before we move into the but what I can tell you is we are going to be very intentional with that. So that's part of the whole screening process. And we're listing it as an elective, but we know that we will have some students that we will assign to that class that will say, "You need to take this class." So although it's an elective, it will count for credit. We didn't want to offer an intervention class that students didn't get credit for. So we really looked at the Minnesota Common Course Catalog to see what courses were in there that we could offer elective credit through. So yes, that will go through the whole screening process, and students will be identified through that.
Okay, thank you. Then my last is not a question, it's just a comment. I'm glad to hear that there's diversity in the guitar class. And I hope that all future new courses are very intentional of soliciting diversity in the class. Thank you.
Thanks.
Les, any questions?
No, thank you. Good presentation. I'm having technical problems, but thank you.
Les, do you want us to handle taking roll call and votes tonight, then?
Probably.
Probably. I think you're muted yet, Les. We're, we're going to take that off your plate tonight.
Wait, wait, hang on just a minute. I think I've got it, I think I've got it fixed now. You know, it's just that my screen is jumping around a little bit, but I think I can manage it. I will try.
All right.
If I fail, somebody will have to pick it up.
Got it. Natalie, you're up next.
Yeah, thank you, Lori, for, oh, my camera's here. Sorry, I have two screens at home. Thank you for having student voice in this presentation. I think that that really, you know, I have three students in the school, so I can know from them, but none of them are taking any of these classes that you talked about. And I know this is like super Monica's alley, where she was like, "I don't want to hear," you know. I'm like, "Ooh, this sounds like a Monica-heavy presentation right now." But I really did like to hear how it's going. The guitar class, when I saw that picture online on our social media of the guitar class, literally tears in my eyes, because of course, that was my major, was music education. And to see how accessible that is for folks that maybe could never have a guitar, or even if it wasn't that they could afford it, it's just, that's not a priority, you know, to some families. And so that's, that's a skill that will carry them through life, you know, when, when they're twenty, twenty, thirty years down the road and there's a guitar at somebody's house, they can pick them up and say, "Hey, here's what I learned in, in high school. That's pretty cool." I love that we're finally here with this Somali class. I know there's been a lot of talk about this and a lot of planning that has gone into this. But when I'm in the community and I'm in a, in a space where there are a lot of my Somali neighbors, all the ti, almost every time I'm in a more heavily Somali space, I get asked, "Why don't we have Somali as a language at school?" And so because we've been down this path, I've been able to say, "Just wait, it's coming, it's coming." So there's just so much excitement about it. We have a Somali language class through United Cloud that's met three different, had three different cohorts go through it. And just the eagerness that all ages have to learn this language is, is amazing. So thank you for, for making this dream a reality.
And I just want to clarify, I think what you're talking about is our next step. So this class is actually for native Somali speakers already. So it's to give them credit, okay? And our next step is to offer a Somali world language class for non-native speakers. So that's our next step.
Okay, I'm just going to lump them together, like, I won't lump them together in the community, just here on this call that the whole community can watch. Okay, thank you. That's also great for comprehension reasons, and, and that, that's, that's beautiful. I was just talking with the mom about dyslexia, and, you know, her child's in third grade, and she, she was like, "Well, there's this. Do you, do you think I should go ahead with this?" Because, you know, so a lot of parents are concerned at that age and at any age that if my child goes through this testing, will they have a label on them for the rest of their lives? And so that's the kind of decision that could be made or not made at that, that time of a student's life, where it isn't until maybe high school, you know, that they're coming to us, and this isn't, this hasn't been identified. So for this to be able to, again, be a place where we can meet the needs of where our students are at is just really, really wonderful, and that it can be an elective. So great, that it's not just a catch-up thing, but it's actually within getting credit for it. So I'm a big fan of yours tonight, so thanks, Lori.
Monica, looks like you're next.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you for leaving me last. I do, I'm gonna repeat some questions. So thank you, Lori, that was a great presentation. I am all with, with all in the, in the how do you suggest courses? I was thinking about that process, and it does, it does feel to me that it is open for people to suggest courses in the, in the process. By the time in the process where you get to parents, it doesn't seem like they are to suggest there. They are more us to check and see and, and give an opinion about what is being suggested. So, so I am with him about how can we open path for a community to suggest courses? But I also want to understand more like, okay, everybody in the community starts suggesting courses. How do you pick? How do you choose? So I'd like to understand how that happens too, before I can really ask for, for, for that, for, for what is the, the suggestion. I, I don't want it to open a process and then having everybody suggesting something and then coming to you and, "Oh, but I have suggested like three different things, and I never come down," or they never get there. So, but I'm interested in, in, in that process, understanding a little bit more about how do you, not, 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 not the steps, but what is the rationality about how that process works and how do we choose what we choose? I guess that if communities suggesting more different courses, it will have to be a, a more involved review process about those courses that have been suggested. So I, I just was wondering about that. The, the, I'm, I'm really glad with the courses that we have. I was looking at the courses that you mentioned that we have looked before. And the nursing course, for example, I wanted to ask you, why do you think that difference between Apollo and Tech students enrolling in that course? What do you think that that is about?
That's a good question. Do you want me to respond to the parent input one first?
It was more of a comment, but if you have anything to add, just go ahead.
Well, I, I think most of you know that I am all about getting voice from multiple stakeholders, so I am always open to ways to do that. I, I think that one of the things that you said, Monica, is right, is that, you know, some of the things that we hear from community members are always really valid and good suggestions. But I do have parents who have contacted us, who have wanted to add things and have been upset when it hasn't just gone through because they suggested it. So I think that is something that we can look at, is how can we increase that parent voice? I know that, that at some of our high schools, they do open it up during their parent advisory meetings, whatever they, they call their parent groups. I know that some of the suggestions that teachers have been, have brought forward in the past have come out of some of those conversations. But I agree with both you and Al that, yep, that is something that we can look at, a way to open that up and to get more parent and community input at the beginning. Okay, remind me of your second question that left my mind.
So I was thinking about the nursing program and what is the difference between Apollo? What do you think that is the difference between Apollo and Tech?
Yep, that's a really good question. And I, I did ask that of our instructor. It's something that I want to follow up a little more with our counselors on as well. We do see discrepancies between the two schools and what interests are in courses. So it's not unusual to have courses take off more in one high school than another, and it may just be around the interest levels of the students. It may be around some of the promotional or marketing things that have happened. One of the things that I'm really excited about this year is a part of our registration process. Our teachers are doing almost infomercials, little video clips about their courses so that students can really hear and see what those courses are. So anytime that we offer a new course, it's not unusual to have enrollments look really different between the two buildings, and it takes a while for them to take off and to see what it really is.
Thank you. So going into the courses right now, I am, was thrilled to see one art offering among the courses. I was also thrilled to see an environmental science among the courses being offered, and also the, the feedback from the students about their environmental class. That was really great. Thank you for that. So in, in terms of arts and in terms of the involvement, I was actually not surprised. I'm happy that you have such a diverse involvement of the students, but I was not surprised because that is just to tell us what happens when you have relevant, relevant courses to people, and I think that is about that. Also, glad that is, that is acoustic guitar that we're looking at. I believe that's, that's bass. And then in, in, and that is part of world classes. The other thing is that when you were talking about Somali class for native speakers, I didn't know that we actually had a native speaker Spanish class. And, and I was just going to come down at you about that in this one, but then you mentioned it. How did I miss that? So I have had parents that have asked me for that class, and I did not, I knew that it was in conversation for a long, long time ago. And I was like, "Okay, how come we got the Somali class?" We have been talking about this for, I don't know, I can't remember, maybe eight years? All right, if it's not more. So when did we get the Spanish speakers, native speakers class, and what does it offer?
I don't know exactly when it started. It has been here for many years. One of the things that we're finding is that we don't have students enroll in the course. So that's one of the things that I talked with Suleen Hasbrook, who is our world language coordinator, and with Kelly Frankenfield, our EL teacher, about how can we promote that more this year as we go into registration time? But the last couple of years, we have not had enough students register to be able to offer it.
Yeah, that's so well-promoted that I didn't know about it. So, okay, then.
I'm on it, Monica.
I'm, I'm on it now. I also will say that I do see a lot more interest in parents about that offering of that class than the students to take it, basically. And, and I'm concerned that it's a high school class, because the students get more pressure from parents in middle school about taking that native class, for one. And in another hand, there is a lot of stigma about students when they speak Spanish at school. And they don't like to speak Spanish at school. They get identified right away as something different. And, and that is part of, and I believe that will be part of why you have that class. In the cla, in the, in the case of Black students, you're, you're different because you're Black. There is not, that, that's a different thing there right away that is visible. So, so that's, that might be something to address about why Spanish, native speaker Spanish, I'm not enrolling in that class. But yes, I'm really happy that we also have the Somali one. In, when you were saying about the next step, you were responding to Natalie's question about next steps for Somali class, for worldwide class. I was thinking actually in Adam, because I do know that there is a lot of interest in the community, and there were other, there were Somali classes for community members through Community Ed in the past. They were somehow successful, but I think that the teachers got burned out. So I'm just wondering about that next steps. And it seems like if we do have a high school class, an elective, we might have better teachers now. And, and by better teachers, I don't want to say that the other ones were bad, but I mean, like, professional teachers that, in the past, I know that there were more community members teaching their language. Is that, is that, is that something that is going to happen? Is that something that is in the plans to be offered through Community Ed?
Yeah, we'd love to offer classes that the community wants. We're having trouble finding that instructor. But we can reach out again and see, especially if there's a high school component, to see if they'd be willing to teach at least one class during the year, if not multiple, because it's very well-attended and it seems to be something our community enjoys.
Thank you. I do think that if you offer it to organizations, I mean, it doesn't have to be a free class. I think that there are people that are willing to pay for it. And the last question is for everybody. How come everybody has the same background? Is that, is that a memo that I didn't get?
It's a memo that the superintendent put out there.
We're all on the same cruise, Monica.
No, you're not.
You're swimming in a pool, Al.
I'm at the aquarium.
All right, I'm done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Monica. Al, you have a follow-up?
Real quick follow-up, I just, in looking for parent feedback, I would certainly incorporate something into the packets when they're doing registrations. And I would do that, I wouldn't start at high school level, I would go back into junior high. And especially ninth grade, when they're starting to form or starting to make decisions on which career path they're going to be looking at. And there may be some coursework or courses the parents are looking at that would be steering into one of those career paths, or it may be way up in some other direction. But I think getting, thinking about it, getting parents thinking about it earlier would be beneficial to getting the, the right courses into junior high and high school.
All right. Thank you, Al. Shannon, you have a follow-up?
I just wanted to follow up on the difference between the CNA class at a Tech and Apollo. And I would think one thing that has to do with that, the initial starting where more students are enrolled in Tech is because when you walk down the hallway at Tech High School, you can see into the classroom, and it's a lab. And students walking by could get really excited that what's going on in that classroom. And so the startup is a little bit slower at Apollo, because you don't have that exposure to the class of walking down the hallway and seeing, you know, this exciting class going on. So that's going to rely more on word of mouth. But I would anticipate that eventually Apollo would too reciprocate, would be the recipient to the Tech enrollment in the course.
Thank you, Shannon. Lori, I'm going to probably hit that same subject, because those numbers really jumped out at me. I'll give you a chance to answer. CNC at Apollo zero, CNC at Tech eighteen, why?
And Jeff, I, I don't know, you know, and that's, that's something that I noticed too. And that I did follow up with Leah Sams, who is our director of CTE. And she didn't have a good explanation either. I know that as we looked at how the, the classes were and kind of those building blocks, those foundational pieces that we talked about. So when you look at our health career, our healthcare core curriculum, those numbers were much higher too. So that pathway was started at Tech somehow differently. And that's one of the things that I am going back to look at, to find out more in depth. We've had some changes in instructors, and I don't know if that has had an impact on it. But I agree, I noticed those numbers right away and have reached out to Leah, and we're doing some digging in with counselors about that and trying to find out the answer to that.
Where is the CNC class based out of? Is there actually a classroom in each school?
Which class? The CNA or the?
CNC.
Um, the.
CNA then.
I think, like Shannon said, you know, it is much more visible at Tech. It is up front. When you go into that area, students can see it. You can see the medical beds right there. You can see the equipment that's there. You can see the equipment that's there. Um, our students are visual just like we are. And I think that having that visibility really draws students to some of those courses. We see it in our culinary arts class too, having that visibility and in our, our tech ed courses. So, you know, I would say that the design of that building also is one of the marketing tools for some of those courses.
All right, so where, and the instructors obviously must be based in each school?
Yep, it's the same instructor. So it's.
Wait, hang, hang on. It's the same instructor at both schools?
Correct.
Where is that instructor based out of Tech or Apollo?
Um, well, our, our CNA instructor is only part-time in our district and also works for St. Ben's. So I don't know where they house out of this year at Lori Putnam. I don't know if you know that. I don't know what their main building is.
That's your fifty bucks at Tech.
Yeah, I don't know that. So I, I don't even want to venture a guess.
Okay, and then, um, net games, it wasn't held at Apollo this year. Once again, why?
Yep, and that, I talked to Jill Lipp, who is the Fayad instructor there, and she said they didn't have enough enrollment, but that's something that she's really doing this year is trying to recruit and to introduce those new course offerings. A lot of times our students, um, stick with what they know. And I think that exposure to those new courses, a lot of it depends on our instructors' marketing as well. So I think that.
Who's the instructor? I'm sorry, who's the instructor over at Tech for the same thing?
Sarah Hagemeister and Jill Lipp.
Do they share ideas and share?
They do. Jill actually is the one that wrote the new course proposal. She is our district lead for Fayad, so she is as perplexed as, as all of us are.
All right, hate to keep beating a dead drum, but guitar class, forty-three students at Tech, and you had said that Tech had enough guitars between the classroom and what they ordered. How many guitars did Apollo have?
Apollo chose not to begin with that class this year. And that was, um, the music department's decision was to start it at Tech and get it off the ground. Again, that was a music department idea. We have offered them to, um, Apollo as well. Apollo opted to go with, um, small guitars for their, or small drums, electric drum pads for their world drumming course, because that's the course at Apollo that's really taken off. Tech has since ordered those as well.
So, correct me, how many guitars did Apollo have?
Oh, I'd have to go back and look. They ordered a class set originally. And then, um, as the enrollment and it started to grow, they were able to get additional guitars from other buildings in the district who were not using them. So there used to be a guitar class that was offered as part of our middle level, um, just kind of an, it was part of the music courses. So our middle levels had some extra guitars, um, that they had. Otherwise, we had the money available to order for both buildings. And that will be there again for next year.
So Apollo ordered some, but they're sitting unused all year.
Apollo chose not to order for this year.
Is that a district decision or is that a building decision?
Well, it was a music department decision that, you know, and it, it's one of the things when we implement new classes, sometimes they're offered in the handbook at each, at each building. And Apollo didn't feel like they had the instructional expertise to offer that yet this year.
Can I, can I jump in?
Yes, please.
And so as the building principal or the former high school principal, so you have the ability to offer both courses at each place. And it's not just the instructor or the music department believing that they have the expertise. As you heard Lori say a second, I believe she said this, at Apollo, there was an interest in the drumming aspect of things. So you had a specific amount of students at Apollo asking for drumming. So they took their money per se and invested it in the little drum. Tech, on the other hand, invested theirs in the guitar based on students saying that's what they want. Now Tech, because they, Tech, because Tech watched what took off over at Apollo with the drumming, now Tech for the upcoming year, now they want the drumming. And now it's how do you make sure that at Apollo, that those students recognize what's going on there and try to drum up that interest? So now you have the guitar happening at Apollo also. And so it's, it's, it's not just the music department, they knew what their students were asking for, but now it's, it's, it's that, the pied piper. You're trying to be the person that's going out to get kids to, um, participate or to want something or to make the request. And, and so we, you're not going to buy, what I heard you say Jeff a second ago is, so those, those guitars were ordered but not being used. And Lori said, no, they didn't order them. They took their money and put it into the, 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 the drums. I'm a percussionist, so I couldn't think of what I'm trying to say.
Got it. And I hear what you're saying, Willie, but I, I've been on the board long enough and I always see a pattern between Apollo and Tech. And some of it is alluded to that maybe Tech is flashy new. Yes, Shannon said it adds great windows, great visibility, but we know that and it's our job to try that much harder to make sure North, South, Tech and Apollo all have some kind of equal. Cause it, it, we just can't keep doing the same thing and expect different results.
And, and I'm not disputing that. I could be the principal at Apollo and I will tell you that Apollo has some offerings that Tech does not have. And so we, eh, I'm, and I have a principal on the, that's here, Adam, that was the principal at Apollo and the principal at Tech. And I'm sure he will tell you that there is, and Adam, you don't need to chime in. Um, but I'm, I know for a fact that there are things that are offered at Apollo that are not at Tech. And we may not have said that out loud to you to show you what that is, because at the moment, we're talking about new course proposals. But there are definite differences in terms of students' wants or requests in each building. And there are definite staff pied piper expertise in each building in terms of just personality and being able to drum up, um, people that want to participate. So Jeff, I'm not disputing it. I'm just, I'm not disputing it. You are correct.
Can I give a suggestion then? Cause we just had the Apollo presentation. Lori, did you see any areas in the Apollo presentation that were jumping out at us that weren't offered at Tech?
Are you asking me or Lori?
Yeah.
Or both of us?
Or both, I don't care, whoever has the answer.
Yep, and I, you know, every year, and I will let Lori Putnam jump in if she's willing and, and available to do that.
I'll jump in. And so Lori can jump in, um, because I also know that there's a difference in two hundred plus students between one building and another. So at times that can have some impact on what you're offering. But Lori, Button, um, because in the presentation, Jeff, that Apollo put up there, I don't think that they had a presentation about what new courses they had in offerings. I think that the Apollo had a different, when you see Tech's presentation, I think you're going to see a difference in style and a, in a difference in, um, some of the things that they will brag about compared to Apollo. Uh, go ahead, Lori. Button.
And before she jumps in, I'd also say that, that's one of the things that we've been really intentional about doing, making sure that any of our new courses are offered for all of our high schools. Um, and that they're, they're not just written for one high school or another, but that they are written for, to be offered at all of our high schools.
Before Lori Putnam jumps in there, and I don't, this isn't, we're not trying to debate, we're just having talk and we're just talking about stuff. Adam, I know that I said, don't speak, but as a former principal, what are some differences that you remember in terms of courses?
Yeah, there was, um, some difference in the, uh, science classes where we'd have a distinctive, um, in mentorship program where they get to watch the heart surgeries and, um, broken down. And I think Apollo was the first one that started with a biology class that was, um, high-bred, more, more hands-on. And then I think it transferred over, if I'm not mistaken, but that was three or four years ago. But there were distinctive, um, areas in the science program with, um, all the teachers over there that was really hands-on and getting the students out in the community.
All right, thanks. I just, Willie, the reason I was bringing this up is the Apollo presentation was a very good presentation. But if I would have seen some of this stuff, I think it would have been an even better presentation, more of a wow factor, more of a wow, you know? I, it just felt like there's always that, something's always missing on the North Side. And, and maybe not, I don't know. It just, I had that feeling.
Apollo has a great automotive course.
Not disputing any of it, Jeff.
Okay.
A great conversation. I see Al, just so you know, I see Al's green light lit up and I see Dr. Green's green light lit up. It's just something I noticed, so I'm just assisting Jeff.
Yep, not a problem. It'll be their turn when it's their turn.
Okay.
All right, Les, you were first, go ahead.
Um, I think we should be careful. Um, as I'm listening to the conversation, it sounds like a rumor is starting about differences in quality of education between Apollo and Tech. I think that Dr. Huff probably can give us the best information that's better than anecdotal perceptions that any of us in the room might have about the quality of, and, and diversity of, of academic offerings at both Tech and Apollo. But it sounds to me like, um, we are, um, making the case that, uh, Apollo's getting shortchanged. And I want to be real careful not to send that message out. So that's all I have to say.
Yep, uh, not the message I was sending, Les, I appreciate the input. I just wanted to make sure that if, if it's just pure building to building and we realize Tech has the windows and the more visibility, that we just take those additional steps. That's, that's all I was concerned about. Um, anybody else have anything or we will?
Yeah.
Al, go ahead.
I, I wish there was a good way to put your hand up in these meetings because.
There's amazing hands.
Um, there, some of the things are intentional, like Apollo has an automotive program that doesn't have the shop, the full shop. It's physical, it's part of the building. Uh, Tech High School, every year they build a house. I don't see that being done at Apollo. There are just differences between the buildings. But in most cases, those courses are offered to students at either building if they want to go to the other building. Gymnastics, girls gymnastics is offered at Tech, it's not at Apollo, but Apollo students go to Tech and, and participate. So it isn't always a problem that they're different. But I did have a question on the CNA program. Uh, when that was being rolled out at Tech, there was quite a bit of talk about Centricare was going to take a role in part, in participating in that. I'm wondering if there was an equal role played by Centricare both at Tech and Apollo?
Centricare did donate, um, equipment and that equipment can be used at both buildings. In fact, we have some in storage right now, ready and, um, ready to go to Apollo when we're ready for it to be there. So yep, Centricare did, um, and, uh, you know, Lori, I don't know, and again, I'm going to rely on you. I know that the equipment is, there is equipment at Apollo that's being used for both, um, the courses. Again, it's, they're taught by the same instructors, but yes, Centricare has donated. We also had a lot of equipment, science equipment and microscopes and things that were left here in our current DAO building that were divided between the two buildings. So we have had some really good partnerships that have supported both buildings.
Lori, so the new equipment that's shiny and bright is in a storage for Apollo because of the space crunch?
No, and that's why, you know, Lori Putnam, I want to know if you, I haven't, um, been over to see the class actually set up, um, at either building this year. So I don't want to say that it's in the building or it's not in the building. But I know that as we were getting the courses set up, that we did put some of the donated, donated equipment into storage until we had, um, the space in the classroom designated for that. And it was, um, not new and shiny for either building. It was equipment that was donated, um, that had been used.
Maybe we need to look at knocking a wall or two out of Apollo and not wait for the referendum and make it more visible like it is at Tech. All right. Thank you very much for a nice presentation. Sorry I asked tough questions. I just, I'm a North Side person, I have to fight for the North Side along with the South Side, because all kids have to be given the same opportunity. Um, at this time, I am looking for a motion to accept both of the new proposals that Lori just discussed.
So moved.
Second.
I heard Natalie and Zach, I believe. All right. Um, Les, could you take role, please? Les, you promised. You're still muted, Les. There you go.
Now I got it, okay.
Awesome, thanks.
I gotta get a bigger screen. Uh, Jeff Polaris.
Yes.
Monica Segura Schwartz. Al Dolgren.
Yes.
Shannon Hawes.
Yes.
Natalie Ringsmuth.
Yes.
Zach Dorhold.
Yes.
Les, screen is yes.
Thank you, Les. Next up, we'll move on to reports. First up is Board of Education Reports, uh, Board Development Policy and Governance Committee chaired by Shannon Hawes. I believe you have a report. Natalie, you'll be next.
Board Development Policy and Governance Committee met November twenty-fourth and we discussed a few policies that you're going to be hearing for a first reading tonight, six oh one, six sixteen and two oh three point two. And I will discuss more in detail when they come out. So that's all I'm gonna, um, report right now.
All right, thank you very much. Um, Natalie, you have a report?
I do not, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, um, Les, you didn't meet today, so no report?
No report.
Got it. Okay, at this time, and I can't see the clock, it's roughly seven forty maybe with the glare. We'll adjourn tonight's school board meeting and move into our work session. Tonight's work session, pretty small, we only have seven items, so please ask lots of questions. Uh, first up is dyslexia report. Dyslexia, see, I think I have it. Um, it's going to be done by Shannon Abelson, Director of Student Services.
Chair Polaris, this is Carol Potter. I will introduce the group tonight. So the dyslexia presentation will be, um, put on by two of our, uh, teachers. The first one is Katie Schneider. She is a point five dyslexia specialist and a point five language arts teacher at North. And Sue Kirinen is, works point five for us as a dyslexia specialist. And these two, um, have really rocked it out. I am very proud to have them, um, on the team doing this. They're very knowledgeable and they are going to give you some wow-ing information tonight. And we also have Shannon Abelson, Director of Student Services, who, uh, supervises these two directly and oversees our district-wide dyslexia team as well. And they are going to provide you with lots of, uh, great data and information on a, a five-year plan for, um, where we've come and where we're headed for the next couple of years. So take it away, Katie and Susan.
Thank you, Carol. I'll start sharing my screen now. All right. So Shannon, Katie and I have put together a dyslexia update for all of you. And on our presentation tonight, we would like to talk about the elementary and secondary Sunday update, talk about our five-year implementation plan as well as considerations for next steps. But this, the dyslexia team looks pretty much the same. We have added a couple of new faces this year. We have asked the Director of Elementary Curriculum and the Director of Secondary Curriculum to join our team. This will just ensure that we have system-wide collaboration and input as well as feedback for our decision-making. So Minnesota Statute one twenty-two point one-two is pretty much the driving factor of why we have worked so hard on this. In a nutshell, it says that we must identify all students who are not reading at grade level. We also must screen them for characteristics of dyslexia unless a different reason for the reading difficulty has been identified. And we must provide the identified students with alternate instruction. So District seven forty-two has some dyslexia screener steps that we follow. First of all, all K through tenth grade students take a universal screener, which is the STAR assessment, three times per year. And a parent, teacher or. And a parent, teacher, or staff may refer a student to the MTSS team or a special ed case manager. MBE has updated their characteristics of dyslexia checklist. So the classroom teacher would also complete that as part of a step. And then the intervention, if necessary, is determined by student need and building resources. So each school has a multi-tiered system of support team, the MTSS team. This is a problem-solving team, and this team looks closely at the data. They analyze it to determine what the appropriate next steps would be to support the student. And each school has a variety of intervention supports, which includes social, emotional behavior, and academic. And of course, the intervention and support are determined by student need and building resources. Okay, so for the elementary Sunday update, first I better remind you why we went with Sunday in the first place. So Sunday is just one of the many Orton-Gillingham programs out there. Orton-Gillingham or structured literacy programs out there. It is a multi-sensory approach to teaching reading, and it follows the science of reading. So now in 2020, well, actually, I better back up. In 2019, the third trimester of 2019, we were able to pilot Sunday for the first time, and we saw nice gains and moved on to pilot it that fall as well. So jump to 2020, fall of 2020. We have Sunday Essentials. So E1 in all of our first-grade classrooms. It is taught during the core reading block. We have Sunday Essentials E1 in four DLA first-grade classrooms. And we have Sunday Essentials 2 in five second-grade Talahee classrooms. Our Let's Play Learn and Sunday One intervention programs are for small group, and they are taught by special education teachers, ADSES, and EL teachers. Here is a nice little chart that is broken down by each elementary school. And as you see on the left-hand column here, it is broken down into the sections. So if we take Discovery Elementary, for example, we have five teachers in first-grade teaching essentials. We have three special ed teachers, one ADSES teacher, and one EL teacher. You can just look down each of the columns for each of the elementary schools and see how many teachers are in each of those sections. Now we have some EduClima data. This is the elementary reading data for Fall 2020 from the STAR assessment. Again, it's broken down into all of the elementary schools. And on the left-hand side here, we have total active students for each school. So if we were to take ClearView, ClearView has 377 total active students right now. 247 of them took the STAR Fall Assessment. And then it is broken down into 0 to 39th percentile with a total of 105 students out of this 247 students falling within the 0 to 39th percentile range. And we chose the 39th percentile because a percentile rank of 40 is a cut score that serves as the proficiency benchmark. And students who score 40% or higher will likely meet the end-of-the-year performance goals defined by state and local standards. So we went with, we went 0 to 39th percentile. This last number down here is the number of students that have not taken the STAR assessment out of the 377 total active students in the building. And it is worth noting that due to COVID-19, not all of the students were able to complete the STAR assessment for this fall.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Katie, and I will be discussing the secondaries. So right now, currently, in the junior highs at South and North, we do have reading interventionists, and I am .5 reading interventionist at North Junior High. And there is a .7 at South. And we both are teaching Sunday 1 and 2 currently. We were part of the pilot group in March of 2019. And so as we have been working with the Sunday now for over a year, we have students who are progressing and now are in Sunday 2, which is super exciting. We have multiple special education teachers in both junior highs. Right now at South, we have one. And then in January, you'll see on a different chart that we'll have more special ed teachers doing the intervention here at North and South. The EL Reading Foundation, three classes. We have Sunday interventions provided through that class. River Woods is using it. And then Sunday 1 and 2 at the high school, we have one EL. So this shows you the teachers, and as you can see, we put that, we have some starting in January. And actually, just in the last week or two, there'll be some added to Kennedy as well. And so that is exciting. And in DLA, we do have one EL teacher currently in the middle school. So this chart is for middle school. Here's the middle school reading data. This is very similar to the one that Sue just went over. If you look at the top, those are the total active students based in EduClima. Then if you look at the total STAR scores, those are the amount of students who were able to take the STAR this fall. And then again, we broke it down to the 0 to 9%, the 10 to 24%, the 25 to 39%. And Sue explains why we chose those chunks or those percents. And then at the bottom is the total amount of students who do fall in the 39% and below category of this universal screener. At the high school, currently, right now, we do have an EL teacher at Apollo and an EL teacher in DLA currently doing Sunday 1. And then at Apollo, what happened is a group of the students that I was working with here at North, we were able to collaborate. And I have been co-teaching with a, and I have to look at my notes here, the Behavior Resource Specialist, which has been super exciting, and I recently trained her. And so together, we are teaching a group of students that are now moved on to Sunday 2, and she will be taking that over in the next week. But we currently do not have anything at the other high schools. Here's the high school reading data. Again, at the top is the total active, oh, and this time I want to point out, we only looked at 9th and 10th grade students currently. Those are the students who are taking the STAR. 11th and 12th graders don't typically take the STAR test. And so that breaks down to that the total STAR scores out of all the students that are 9th and 10th grade, and the breakdown along with the totals who fall in the 0 to 39%. This chart shows our professional development. And it's super exciting, because you can see in 2018, 2019, that was starting to be the pilot. That's when I began this journey with Sue. And I was a middle school interventionist at that time. And so there is, as you can see, there's a lot more people being added as we progress through the years. So in 2019, 2020, you can see the list. We have ADSES teachers, academic leads, academic coaches, elementary interventionists. And then, of course, the middle school interventionists also received the Sunday 2 training. And then this year, we added the 38 first grader, first grade teachers to do Sunday E1. We have more in the Distance Learning Academy, ADSES teachers, elementary special ed, junior high EL, and River Woods. So this just is a nice chart to see how it is growing. This chart gives me goosebumps, because if you look at the pilot year, we were able to support 141 students. And I'm just going to skip to this year, because now we are supporting 1,114 students. We started off with 11 teachers, and now we're at 96, and that's growing, which is exciting to report on, and we hope to continue to grow. I'm not going to go over this chart as much. This is just a beautiful way of looking as to like the overall, where we're at, with the numbers, with all the different types of interventions that we offer, and where it's located, and who is teaching it.
So now we'll go through some Sunday testimonials from teachers who are currently teaching a Sunday program. Estelle Turk from Madison says, "There are very few moving parts, which I find allows my students to be more successful due to the growth I've seen and how many students respond to the intervention. I highly recommend the program to other educators."
Barbara Koenig from Oak Hill. "My students know they need to be accurate and fluent in both reading and writing at their current level before we can progress to a new level. So they are motivated to try hard to succeed. Sunday was a great investment for our school district."
Amy Strite from South. "My students enjoy the program because they like the structure, repetition of the program, and finally feel successful in their reading."
Bashir Omar, North Junior High teacher. "Sunday system is a must-have system for English reading foundation programs."
Melissa Atkinson from Talahee. "The Sunday curriculum explicitly teaches the rules of the English language. Students get the same structure and routine every day. The curriculum has data collection built right into the lessons and provides great information to bring to MTSS. The student growth that comes from teaching this curriculum with fidelity is amazing. My students are flourishing."
Tracy Kircoff from Madison. "I think that every special education teacher should have the opportunity to use this program. They would be just as amazed by the progress their students could make, just as mine have. I am just excited to be able to use this program, and it works."
Here are some Sunday testimonials from current students. "I like the beginning when we read the letter sounds fast."
Touch spell helps me sound out words.
A middle school student said to another, "You need Sunday."
The letters make words.
A student marveled, "Are you finally teaching us how to read?"
This is my favorite group.
Reading is so fun.
A 9th grade student let her counselor know she needed to continue the Sunday intervention in high school to help her be successful in school.
I'm actually reading.
During a hybrid lesson, a student commented, "My mom and grandma need what you are teaching me."
During the lesson, students took flame. This is so fun. So where are we meeting legal requirements? Well, all students K through 10th grade get STAR, which is our universal screener. And we identify all students not reading at grade level from these STAR scores. We are providing alternate instruction for some students in ADSES, EL, and SED. And we are annually reporting to the Commission of Education by July 1st a summary of the district's efforts to screen and identify students demonstrating characteristics of dyslexia. So where are we meeting legal requirements for some students? Well, we need to be screening all identified students for characteristics of dyslexia. We also need to provide alternate instruction for students identified as not reading at grade level. And then we would need to continue to provide a reading intervention until that student reads at or above grade level. We also want to encourage family engagement and collaboration with appropriate school and community programs. And intervention methods may require attendance in summer school or may require that students be removed from the regular classroom for part of the school day or extended day programs for an intensified reading instruction or programs that strengthen students' cultural connections.
Here's the start of the five-year implementation plan. So when this all began in 2018 and 2019, and we were able to have Sue help us with all of this, she provided dyslexia awareness to all 742 teachers. They determined a dyslexia screener, and they trained teachers on that. There's lots of research around the Orton-Gillingham curriculum and then out of state. They chose to pilot the intervention program, and they also designed the dyslexia website. Year two, which is last year, they provide, we continued to provide dyslexia awareness to 742 teachers. The dyslexia website continues to be updated. We continued the Sunday pilot. We added special ed and ADSES teachers to the pilot. We collected Sunday data. We did pre and post-assessments. And through the intervention, there are mastery checks. And all the teachers in the pilot collected all that data and provided teacher feedback. And then they put revised statutes in the playbook with link to website after the Sunday data was released. And here we are now. This is this year. And as you can see, we are busy, but I am very excited about this. So if I get super excited and I look giddy, it's because I am. And so I'm excited to report to you all the things that we are doing this year. And one of the main things we are talking about are how are we meeting the new dyslexia laws? How are we going to consider continuing Sunday with the pilot E with the first-grade teachers? And then also the Sunday 1 and Sunday 2 programs or any intervention? How are we going to continue to train, assess, support? How are we going to collaborate, or I'm sorry, work collaboratively with special ed and EL? Will we consider community outreach? How do we do that? We want to make sure we are also consistent with the process, with the district screener, the MTSS process, creating 504, and special ed team. We want to, this is where I'm going to stop for a little bit, because this is going to bring us back to the data that we looked at. When we use the universal screener, we understand that there are a lot of students that fall in the 39% and below. So we need to dig deeper, and we need to truly understand each student individually. And how can we do that? And so one of the things that we are starting to implement and work on is hopefully by mid-February, after the second round of STAR data, we will have a process where we can actually provide a spelling inventory that is from Sunday for all those secondary students, and that will definitely help us start digging deeper as to how we move forward and how we support all of our students. Can we consider Title I funds in middle school to purchase Sunday interventions? Can we consider funding for Sunday Essentials and Sunday intervention programs, giving funding success of E1 and E2? Adding more interventions in secondary? And communicating with administration on the process of how this all looks and how it works? How are we going to schedule data team meetings to make sure students continue the success that they are receiving? This, it can take time. And so we want to make sure students, if they're able to start something great and it's working for them, we want to make sure that we can continue giving them that opportunity. Focusing on our transient population, we are understanding that a lot of our students don't necessarily go through our K-5 system, and they become our students. And how can we help them immediately if they do show characteristics of dyslexia? How are we going to collect all of this data, keep it all straight, and make sure we are doing what is best for our students? And how are we going to prioritize to meet the updated legislation? Our hopes and dreams for next year. Could we consider reading interventionist positions at each building we could possibly share? Could we talk about how that looks? Consider additional Um, consider additional assist grade four and up? The continuum of Sunde intervention starting in grade four and up? How can we provide more support in EL and special ed and general and the gen ed? Is co-teaching an opportunity where we can provide support and interventions? And also consider the, the second grade Sunde E um, system based on the E one data this year with also having the understanding that um, this year is a little different. Whew. And then that'll bring us to two years from now. And we just want to make sure we are ensuring and meeting any new legislative updates. And at that point, we would also want to consider adding the Sunde E three that would be part of the core um, as we move forward and of course sustain everything we have created and make sure students are being successful with what we are providing. Here's our consideration for next steps. An ongoing system-wide collaboration with Core Literacy, Special Ed, English Language Learners, funding for Sunde Essentials and Sunde Intervention Programs, professional development time built into the school calendar, the consistency and process, the district screener, the MTSS, the five oh four and special ed, additional staff to support data and program implementation. And that would also include the course that Lori introduced earlier in the evening. Data collection and tracking and prioritizing how to meet updated legislation.
Now we will take a look at our updated dyslexia website. We have added Katie Schneider's information to that page. So let's see there she is right there. And when you go to the dyslexia webpage, you can search for dyslexia in the search bar. You can also find it under alternative programs and services under dyslexia services. When you click on that, it will bring you to this nice little dropdown menu to, um, learn more about what we have on dyslexia on the website. So we just shared a lot of information with you and we have enjoyed the process so far. So do any of you have any questions for us?
Zach, your lead is off. Do you have any questions? Okay. Al, any questions?
Do we have any hard data on results from the program as to what it's doing for the kids? Um, I, I love the testimonials where the kids were talking about how it's improving their outlook on education. But is there anything coming back to us saying that what we're doing is working, especially with individual students who may have been dyslexic that they're seeing amazing turnarounds?
Yeah, we, pardon me?
I was gonna say, do you wanna jump in?
Sure. We have, um, collected data over the last few years from teachers. They first, we have that STAR data and then we have what's called mastery checks within the program. Each program, they will either have a mastery check at the third level, the fifth level or the tenth level depending on the program they're in. And that mastery check will tell us if the child is ready to move on with more of the English language rules taught in Sunday or if they need a repeat lesson or perhaps they're not quite ready to move on. But yeah, we have collected data from, for a couple of years on that.
And I can jump in as a teacher who, um, was using it and still is. When I started with my group of students that March of twenty nineteen and when they left me pre-COVID, um, they made three years' progress in that amount of time. And that was just amazing and they were proud, but they, they knew it. And then they were cute because they're like, well, how quick can you get us to the next level? And, um, they were eager to learn and I even had a group of boys ask if I would meet them at the St. Cloud Library this summer before they entered high school to continue the Sunde intervention with them.
Yeah, and this stuff is real to me. I had my oldest son was, he's thirty now, but he struggled the whole way through school just with reading and and it's not that he was a stupid kid. He was a very smart kid. He just couldn't grasp reading.
Yeah.
And to this day he can't. And I've actually shared, um, from these meetings and sitting and watching. I've called him and talked to it and it's like, Andy, you gotta get yourself involved in some type of a dys- dyslexia program somewhere to see if you can't start using some of the techniques to just make reading better for you. Because it, like I said, to this day, he still struggles with that and it's a very, very real thing. And I know that the legislature would never put anything in front of us that they didn't fully fund. So, uh, when we see these mandates that are being handed down from the state, uh, I agree with those mandates one hundred percent. I mean, this is, this is a, this is a, um, a groundbreaking transition for our district and hopefully we are able to fund it. But boy, when the legislature speaks and puts something in front of you, they should step up and put the money in front of you to do it. And it's just, it's another, it's another unfunded mandate, but it's very, very, very necessary. And so it's, it's, you know, it's like, it's not a choice, but it hurts. You know, what is it hurting? What is it taking away from? When we fund this, what are we taking away from? And I'm, and it's to the point, come on guys in the legislature. Every time we put a new program in front of us, we shouldn't have to choose something else that we're gonna take away. Uh, cause there, those other programs benefit students also and you know, but this is one that we definitely need and, um, very, very proud of the work that the group has done. Very proud of the work that the district has done. I know we're one of the leading districts in the state. Uh, it's, it's exciting to see and I know it's gonna pay off in the long run, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to say thank you to the presenters and to the many, many, um, people that are making this happen in the district. Um, thank you kindly. The, this is huge. It's impressive. I know that there's so much in front of us too. Like Al mentioned, I would love for us to start collecting data, um, for individuals so we can see these success stories because I am sure that that is what is going to be happening. Dyslexia runs in my family too, very strong. Uh, many, many family members with dyslexia. So this is outstanding. Thank you very, very much for the work that you have done and for your vision to, to make this work. So thanks.
You're welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I see Dr. Green's light has lit up green, so I'll let him go first.
I just wondered if, if I was supposed to go. I, uh, it was interesting. Uh, I thought Monica, Monica was giving the presentation because there, there were so many questions. And, uh, so, uh, but I, I, you know, the format is, uh, was, was well done. And I think the, the point that Al made about hard data is important also. Uh, but the anecdotal information is, gets us to the kind of, uh, feeling tone of, uh, of what we're actually doing for people. So well done. And I think we are, we're gonna have to, uh, again, find the money to, uh, to put this together. So that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Les. Willie, do you have anything to add?
The only thing I was gonna add, thank you Chair Polaris. The only thing I was gonna add was the simple part, it's piggybacking what Dr. Green just said is thank you for, as a board, for supporting this, um, and for supporting the students and us in this endeavor. And then I have this sneaky, sneaky feeling that there's somebody out there in the audience that's watching. And so Mr. Jerry Von Corp, we're just saying thank you to you now because there's no way that you are not paying attention to this presentation. So I just had to say that.
I would just add, he is watching. I've gotten emails.
Hi Jerry.
Thanks Jerry.
All right, Natalie, you're next.
Okay. Well, thank you for that great presentation. I was on the school board at Stride Academy when this was first introduced there and, um, to hear the stories here happening the same way it is at Stride, it's just, uh, it's life-changing, y'all. I mean, I don't have to tell you guys, you're telling us it's life-changing. Um, I don't know that there's, there can be, I mean, there's so many important things in a district, right? But I don't know that there can be much more of an important thing than what you guys are doing. Uh, because if you, if you can't read, I mean, of course you're gonna have a behavior problem, right? Of course you're not gonna wanna come to school. Of course you don't wanna graduate. Of course you are going to turn to something else, drugs, alcohol, sex, whatever, right? And so, um, to see where we are in twenty twenty versus when, when, um, you know, my husband has struggled with reading his whole life. My daughter struggled in the first part of her education and it was some of these, uh, these techniques that were taught her that made the, the switch just turn on for her in third grade. And so, um, when you say, we, we could have a reading interventionist at each school, yes. And I know that if we had the monies a day, like, of course you would do that, but, um, the way that you've been rolling out is very sustainable. And I just gotta say, from a nonprofit executive director standpoint, I love a good action plan. And so to see that, um, you've done the things you say you're gonna do and that you're gonna sustain them is just really, um, a beautiful thing to see. Uh, I would, I have here a note, new legislation equals more money. So, uh, from the state. So Al, I feel ya. I'm learning from you, brother. Um, and, uh, I also wanted to say thank you for bringing that teacher and student voice in as well. I, it just gives such a, a personal, you know, a lot of stuff we do on the board can be really high level, which we should be. That's our purview. But to put the personal and the professional into it with our teachers and students really helps us in making decisions we need to make. Um, when you said, uh, they were proud and then you said they were, oh, you went to the library. You were the most teacher. Oh, you didn't? Anyway, I bet that broke your heart. That's the most, I was gonna say, that's the most teacher thing that any teacher's ever done. Of course you would go meet him at the library and.
I would have, yes.
Yeah, but three grade levels, life-changing. I mean, um, what we're doing here will, is changing lives and changing families and changing generations and it's no small feat. And then I also wrote down here, uh, you are part-time? What is happening here? How do you do all of that work for, at a point five? You're amazing. So, um, I just, just thank you for what you're doing for our community and for our students and our families.
You're welcome.
Monica?
So thank you very much for the presentation. Um, I have one question for you or Carol or Sylvia, I'm not sure who will get it, but how do you evaluate this program? What, what, what is the evaluation methodology for it?
I'm sorry, say, say your question one more time.
What is the evaluation methodology for this program?
The methodology?
For evaluation. How, how did you evaluate the program? Not the kids, the program.
Oh, got it. Okay, so we spent, um, quite a bit of time researching both programs used both in and out of state and talked to many different teaching and learning, um, people as well as principals and teachers to find out what program were they using for struggling readers and, and especially students with dyslexia that they found the most success with. And there were two programs that kept coming up time and again. One was the Wilson program and one was Sunde. And they were both Orton-Gillingham structured literacy programs. And so we, um, I was not part of the walkthrough that went and, um, viewed the Wilson program that happened before I came on board. But, um, there was a lot of feedback from that program as well as feedback from the Sunde program. So since we were able to pilot Sunde that very year of two thousand and nineteen, that third trimester of two thousand and nineteen, we decided we would go with that program even though we thought both programs, um, would show growth and success according to what other districts had, um, mentioned to us that their schools saw.
So thank you. Um, let me rephrase my question. I, I'd like to know which ones are the specific goals and milestones of the dyslexia program in the school and how do you know that you are achieving those?
The goals of the program?
Yes. The goals of how I now focus in dyslexia that may include the work that you're doing, the program specific, the curriculum, the number of, uh, enrollment. What, I, I'm wondering how, how do you think about the structure of the dyslexia program and how are we knowing that this is working the way that we expect it to work?
Sure. So we, um, go through a process. We, we screen students with our, um, district, we go through the district protocol with the dyslexia screener. So we first give them the universal screener and find out who is struggling by their STAR scores. And then we would, um, give them a characteristics of dyslexia screener and find out what their area of need was. If they were a struggling reader, we would give them an assess, this dyslexia screener, which is an assessment test that finds out, digs deep into all the foundational reading skills, phonics skills, and then, um, reading and spelling skills. And so we find out what does the specific child actually need? And then we place them accordingly in, uh, intervention program that suits their needs. Is, is that what you're asking?
Hmm, no, I was asking about the program and the investment that we're doing in the program and how do we need, how do we know that the investment is enough? How do we know that is, that is not enough? Um, how, how do we know that this is working? I'm not sure, um.
I have the answer.
Sounds like Willie wants to jump in, Monica.
Yep, I have the answer. And, and it's not an answer yet. What it is, is actually what Al Dahlgren asked. It's what some others asked earlier in terms of specific, um, measurables. And Monica, in the beginning, you said, yep, you were in agreement with Al. And so it's those specific measures or those specific measurables that we're coming up with. At the moment, we're at the beginning. So it's the, it's the very, very beginning. What you heard was some anecdotal in terms of what people are feeling. At the same token, you heard teachers and specific folks say, hey, it's three grade levels or I've moved up three different levels. And so at this point in time, Monica, we are collecting all that data and we're looking to see how it's being applied to our students. From there, we'll be able to go to the good Dr. Sylvia Huff and go ahead and put that all together. And now that will be our baseline and we will be able to go from there.
Is it okay if I add one additional thing to?
Dr. Huff, you know it's okay.
Um, so one thing also, Monica, is that our first graders this year are all receiving Sunde one. And so we are coding them specially in order to track the impact on this cohort of students longitudinally. And in our current World's Best Workforce Plan, um, one of our new goals in terms of all third graders reading at grade level is focused on this cohort of students. And so we've been reviewing the percentage of students that are typically at grade level by third grade and then looking at STAR data of where our current first graders are right now. And we set a goal out for by the time they're in third grade, taking into account the fact that they'll be going through the Sunde intervention and hopefully being able to see the impact with that cohort of students as well. So we'll be tracking that over the course of the next two years. We'll be able to give you updates as it comes through.
Thank you very much. Um, also, um, up for Susan Akkadi, what is what you have enjoyed the most? Like each one of you in this year of this program?
I, I can start. Um, I just told Sue the other day. So I was a third grade, I've been with the district for sixteen years as a third grade teacher. And then I asked to become a middle school teacher, to be a language arts teacher. And then from there, I was an academic coach for a brief moment. And then I was like, ah, I need to go back to the students. And as I was teaching them, I noticed that we, I was having. And as I was teaching them, I noticed that we, I was having students that were struggling with reading more and more and more. And I used to think that if, uh, I just put good books in front of my students, they would be able to read and I was wrong. And I never was given the tools or the resources as to like how to really teach someone. And I use someone because you can teach any age how to read. And this gift was given to me as a teacher and now my kids are going to be able to read. And that is exciting to me.
Probably for me, what I find most exciting is when teachers realize that this is what their students need. If they follow the science of reading and the progression of reading and not be afraid to put their biases aside of what they think the kids might be thinking about this program. Because sometimes teaching Vinny McC awareness and phonics can be a little boring, but it's okay. This is what our students need and the students actually don't find it boring because they recognize this is what they need. And from the student testimonials, you can see that even some of those testimonials were, um, older students. And when students recognize this is what they need, it's a beautiful thing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No questions?
All right. Um, Katie and Susan, could you guys please listen to this presentation tomorrow? And then redo your presentation because I just personally heard three or four beautiful statements that should have been included in this presentation. I mean, thank you. It was great, great presentation, great program. I am so happy it's coming to fruition. Now, because I like charts, I'm sorry. Um, somebody, I seen the chart there was 96 teachers and there's one general ed high school teacher. And next year, zero. There's none being added. So I'm going to argue for the South side this time because the ones at Apollo, wha- is, why aren't we having one at Tech? I mean, why, or in, in ALC?
Yep, I can jump in. So this is the year where we are really going to, so most importantly, we want to make sure we are giving our students what they need, right? And sometimes we can't just jump in and be like, wow, we have 1,500 kids who just need something. We really have to dig deep. So as we dig deep, because kids get placed in certain levels, it's not just a one size fits all type of program. So we want to make sure our students are getting what they need. And with that, we'll use the data this year. And as I'm working, I've been going to MTSS meetings and being part of the process. And then this is where hopefully by spring, that we will be able to create what they need starting next year and we'll start adding. And can we do it through co-teaching? So that is what our considerations are, like how, how can we do this? And who is it that needs this? And that's where we are starting. So there will be, right?
So was I reading the chart wrong where it said there isn't any schedule to add one at the high school level at Tech next year?
Yeah, maybe I just skipped over, I think I just meant like reading interventionists in general. So how are we going to provide that? So it's on there. It will be, we are, and that is the course that Lori introduced earlier.
Okay. Um, and as you get to know me better, which you probably won't, I won't give you the time. Unfortunately, I'm off the board soon. But, uh, I'm selfish. If you give me five, I want six. I want more for our kids.
I, me too.
So, um, and now kind of back to Al's story. We have one at Apollo, so we have one general in the high school level. Let's call it district wide. If you're an 11th grader or 12th grader, you're not going to experience this, correct?
Not right now, but I will be honest with you. MTSS at Apollo reached out to me recently, right? There is a student, we are going to talk about that student and we will figure out how can we help them. So we are having conversations with the students that are being brought up to the MTSS team. I can't guarantee that there's an actual Sunday intervention at Apollo right now where that student could slide in, but can we get creative? So how we got creative at Apollo was I started teaching it during my dyslexia special time. So I jumped out of this role to take those kids and continue working with them. And then in the meantime, they were like, hey, our behavior, I'm so sorry, I always get this acronym wrong. Is it the behavior specialist? I have my notes, but.
Behavior Resource Specialist.
Thank you.
You are welcome, dear.
Okay. So the Behavior Resource Specialist and they're like, she would love to teach these kids. And I'm like, perfect. First of all, having passion is so important to help kids read. And so then we worked together and then I trained her in the Sunday too. And now we're co-teaching this week and I'm gradually going to release her. So that can be done. Thinking outside the box can be done. So as kids are brought to our attention and as we dig deeper with the data, we will problem solve to make sure our needs are met.
Thank you for continuing to think outside the box because that student that may or may not get that innovation in 11th grade is Al's son or daughter 12 years from now is a 30 year old. I don't want to see anybody get missed. Um, and why aren't all the students getting this star? Does it have to be in person? Can we work around COVID or is there thinking outside the box there?
Well, and yeah, so I think as we enter the winter data, um, and we are working, I'm working with Kim Hess and Sue Friday to develop a way of making sure we give this, uh, quick screener. So we have a way of screening all the secondary students with like a snapshot to start digging deeper. And we are going to create something electronically that is simple and easy to give to them. So we can start working on it now. And then I think a lot of the students, like for me, I can speak personally as a middle school language arts teacher too currently, is my students, you know, if they're at home and I say push the button, I can keep telling them to push the button and I can keep calling home, but un- unfortunately, that's not always the case. I mean, there's lots of different scenarios as to why kids may have not, um, taken the star test this fall.
All right. I have one last comment and question. I think, and I bet I would have everyone agree that this is very, very important in every student's life. What priority would we give it? Are we not giving it a high enough priority because Susan, you're a point five?
Yeah.
What do you do on your other point five?
Uh, work on dyslexia staff.
Okay, because maybe we need to find another point five and double the great work that you're doing. So I hope Willie and Amy and whoever can find some money in our budget because this is where it needs to be spent, or at least if we can. So thank you everyone for a great presentation. Does anyone have any follow-ups that I missed? Okay. Thank you, ladies.
I don't know, I was pushing my hand.
Wow. Okay, go ahead, Monica, even though you were last.
Yes, but not after you and you brought the one more question. So here it is. Um, so what you, you were talking about that those, eh, these, eh, the, the behavioral specialist people, uh, as other people that could be teaching for this or, or being involved in this. Um, and we were talking about evaluation. I, I like to see, uh, that consideration being part of the evaluation process somehow. It's not only about the progress of the students, but also who is involved within their, their, the using of the tools and how are we expanding into who is teaching? So I just wanted to, to put that comment there. Thank you. And who does that, the, the overall, uh, overlook of this program? Is that, is that on the Lories or on the Carols? Is it Carol?
Yep, it's Carol, no.
Yeah, it's Student Services, Monica. And so Shannon Avinson is actually the director who works, um, directly with the district team. So we have a much larger team, um, as well, but it falls under Student Services right now.
Also, so if I have questions or something about, um, the evaluation process, is that with, eh, with Shannon?
Yes, you could talk to Shannon about that, sure, or myself, sure.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Chair Polaris, I must have hit some wrong button that shows hand up, hand down. So I see, lower my hand. I, I got it. Is it down now? Okay. Chair Polaris, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Next up is school updates, activity updates and COVID updates. It's going to be by Dr. Marcia Beish, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Education and Dr. Lori Putnam, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education.
Good evening, Chair Polaris, Superintendent Jett, members of the board and community members joining us via loss during this evening. Dr. Putnam and I are happy to share highlights and, uh, and our school updates with you this evening. You can go to the next slide. Here you see fifth graders at Oak Hill who were able to participate in, in virtual Knowledge Bowl this fall. Students worked together as a team while socially distanced to answer trivia questions. This Oak Hill team took fourth place out of 18 at a recent meet. All Oak Hill students received instruction from Talent Development Specialist Amanda Anderson this fall as part of their Allied Arts rotations. Students participated in activities such as engineering a tower and creating robots to do a job out of various art supplies. In a bit, you're going to see a video which highlights a preschool teacher practicing a Google Meet with her students at school to ensure they would be successful with Google Meet during Distance Learning 2.0, when learning from home. In this video, the teacher shared her screen with the children so they could sing the ABC song, sound together. So in the video, you got to see students actually practicing what it would have looked like when they're home now during distance learning this, this week, uh, when they started 2.0. So, all right, thanks, Ryan. A CSO assignment as Lincoln Elementary students kicked off their first day of distance learning with their new schedule was for students to take a photo of themselves with an adult after reviewing the schedule and expectations. This activity provided an opportunity for families to ask questions about the schedule and ensure they had a good understanding of what was expected from their child as they kicked off Distance Learning 2.0. And in these photos, you see a morning meeting on the left in session and math lessons at Discovery. Technology setups for Distance Learning 2.0 show how teachers are using the smartboard as a second screen. Students see what is on the smartboard as they hear their teachers in the Google Meet. Daily elementary schedules include whole class morning meeting, synchronous instruction in reading and math, live small group instruction and live teacher support sessions, one in the morning and one in the afternoon. Attendance is monitored daily by site, social emotional learning teams. Students are being called daily if they are not engaging. Principals have been pleased with the attendance these first several days of school. In the, uh, video you're about to see, you will hear from the Distance Learning Academy music teacher Courtney Ryan. She assigned third grade students in CSO one page from the book, Where the Wild Things Are, and asked them to record themselves making sounds they thought would fit the page. She saved all their sounds and edited them together on Soundtrap, which is a music editing software. When the sounds were all put together, she put the track into iMovie with the book's pictures and completed the video. Students really loved the video. The sound effects added so much to the story and students loved that it sounded like they were all together in one room. This is an excerpt from the story. Where the Wild Things Are, Story and Pictures by Maurice Sendak. The night Max wore his wolf suit and made mischief of one kind and another. His mother called him, "Wild thing", and Max said, "I'll eat you up", so he was sent to bed without eating anything. That very night, in Max's room, a forest grew and grew and grew until his ceiling hung with vines and the walls became world all around. And finally, I'm going to conclude this evening with an uplifting video shared by Talahee Principal Nikki Hanson. This video is a testament to the spirit of students and staff throughout all our elementary schools. I hope you enjoy this excerpt from the video as much as I did. Thank you.
Good evening. This, uh, I'm going to talk a little bit about our alternative programs and activities. Uh, sometimes we, um, I, um, don't always bring up the great work that's happening at McKinley, Roosevelt and Riverwood, so this evening they get most of the show to themselves. Our McKinley Panthers, um, are really embracing a culture of positivity and celebration this year. Each month, students are recognized as McKinley stars by their teachers and their names are listed in that top corner. Uh, the recognitions are given for outstanding accomplishment, perseverance or effort. Students are recognized on Schoology and of course in person when, uh, they, we are in hybrid learning. Um, and they're also given a special treat. Seen on the slide are also the Excellence in Education Support Staff winners. Uh, congratulations to Mary Brown, Joan House and April Kipka. Uh, there's, we really appreciate these staff for their accomplishments and for the ways they support our McKinley students and staff. Here, uh, is, it features, um, our Roosevelt Education Center family. Uh, this fall, their focus has been very much on developing systems that allow them to move smoothly through instructional models and building the concept of a school family that can connect them through their ever-changing school year. The hybrid model at REC allows for students to attend in person four days a week alongside their peers that chose full-time distance learning. And of course, as you're aware, these students did just transition to distance learning on Monday, November 30th. When they were in hybrid and when we returned to hybrid, instead of moving our distance learning students to the Distance Learning Academy, um, they chose to keep their students with them, just like McKinley did, so that they're learning concurrently with their brick and mortar peers. And that, that, uh, option allowed them to leverage relationships in a small setting that best supported their students in their ongoing learning. At the high school level, they created a unique schedule that allowed them to focus on four classes at a time in a split block model. Students attend four classes for each half of the trimester and then they switch to the next. It allows for students to cover all required classes in a quarter, but not have to focus on all six at any given time. We know that that's a challenge for all of our students during. We know that that's a challenge for all of our students during distance learning. The change adds the benefit of creating stronger relationships between students and staff and has better supported our students who are joining us through distance learning. They are especially prepared moving into full distance as their concurrent instruction ensures expectations and the flow of instruction will change very little from one model to the other, and their students know what it looks like from both ends, from hybrid and from being at home in distance learning. Their goal has been to keep a predictable environment, reduce anxiety, and keep students engaged and connected through systems and relationships. They continue to look out for opportunities to connect in a socially-distanced manner throughout the year. They had a cookout and a beanbag tournament earlier in October, and you can see those pictures here, and they had turkey bingo this week. They also updated their Roosevelt Family Tree mural, and if you haven't seen it, it's just gorgeous. It's absolutely worth a visit to meet the students and the staff and to check out that picture. And I'm stepping just a little bit into elementary because Kate wanted me to share this as well. At the elementary level, before Thanksgiving break, one of their BSS staff turned himself into a turkey, which is that middle picture, and students could earn feathers by engaging in kind acts, and then he added them to his costume throughout the day, so his turkey costume grew. At Riverwoods, thanks, Ryan, they found great success with their hybrid model, which again meant for them providing in-person learning four days a week, and they've been providing concurrent classes with students in the classroom and online to meet students' needs, much like REC. Like other secondary schools, Riverwoods moved from a six-period day to a block schedule, and they chose to go with three periods a day instead of the four, which reduced their number of transitions. When reviewing their data, they've experienced a significant decline in suspensions and a reduction in major classroom disruptions, part of which they attribute to that decrease in transition. To support students during the challenging times, they've also been providing all of their students in the program with access to DIRT Group, which is a skills group that they've implemented with their partners at Crow River Family Services. In terms of activities, the State High School League, the Minnesota State High School League meets tomorrow to discuss their plan for winter activities. Until we know more about what that's going to look like, virtual coaching has been happening in all of our winter activities, and each coach submitted a plan to our ADs. They also continue to recruit new athletes and participants during this sort of downtime. Some other highlights are that Apollo's theater production of War of the World goes live on the St. Cloud website this Friday at 7:00. It'll be available on demand for two weeks. It was rehearsed and produced 100% virtually. Also, the Apollo Mock Trial Team is sponsoring their 27th Annual Mock Trial Invitational on Saturday, December 19th. Up to 30 teams will participate, and again, the event is 100% virtual. So despite the challenges of distance learning, our athletics and activities are finding ways to continue to connect and engage with our students. And finally, we are going to wrap up with a brief highlight video. It's actually about an eight-minute video, we're going to just check out about a minute or so, of the highlights from South from trimester one. Ryan, you can go on to that next slide. Thank you. And this is original music by Axel Craftnik again. I'd be happy to forward that video on. It's a beautiful compilation of South's highlight reel, and so we welcome any questions that you may have.
You're good, Zach? Okay. Ally, you're up. You're good? Shannon?
Just one question. Did you say the War of the Worlds link will be on the district website? Is that where we can find it?
Yes, on Friday.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Les?
Always exciting. Good job. You know, I wonder, I mean, I really don't wonder, I think that the distance learning has brought out the best in a lot of people, so good job.
Natalie?
Yeah, I loved all of it. I'm amazed at teachers, I always have been amazed at teachers, but teachers literally teaching how to learn in a pandemic. That's not anything any of those teachers learned in college, that's for sure. So it was beautiful to see that at our elementary. I also didn't know that I still knew all the words to Where the Wild Things Are. My son Aaron, who's now in ninth grade, that was like an every-night book of his, and so to hear those students making those sounds, I've heard those before in our house. Beautiful. As far as secondary goes, I just wanted to give a shout out to the art teacher at North. My daughter won a Kahoot sometime in the end of the first semester, and today, in the mail came a make-your-own bookmark kit. And so, you know, just to get mail, first of all, is amazing, but to see that there's still those connections happening even though we're not in person is really beautiful. And I'm going to totally steal that line from that South teacher, "nobody liking no jerk." That's going to be my new slogan, so. Thank you for bringing so much fun into this meeting through your videos and your presentations, Marcia and Lori, I really appreciate it.
Monica, you're next.
So you guys are really stepping up with these presentations with the video thing and then the cute stuff and then the music stuff, so it's just good to you, thank you very much. We're going to get out of COVID, and I'm going to still want these presentations like this, she just put the bar a little higher. So yeah, thanks a lot, and thanks for the art piece, and I don't have more comments.
Thank you, Monica. Lori, on the War of the Worlds, it's going to be on our district website, is it going to be anywhere else?
Tammy, do you know if it's being anywhere else? I know that there was a news story on KNSI about the production, and it was available or they shared when it would be available through that media outlet.
Quinn is actually in the play, so from what I've heard from him, it's, I don't know who said this to me on Facebook from the 7:42 Facebook button. It's going to be streamed live on YouTube? Am I right about that? Tammy, you might know.
It's going to be like graduation, so it's a premiere on YouTube
Right, right.
on Friday. So it will debut on Friday night, and then it is posted to YouTube. And the reason that we can have that whole production is it's a public domain, so we don't have any worries about copyright violation, and so that's a really great thing. But that's where it'll be available if you're not seeing it on, you know, on our website that night, that's where it will be available, you can watch it anytime after that.
Thanks, Tammy. I consider myself normal. If I wasn't at this meeting, I probably would never hear about this War of the Worlds. I mean, once again, I'm asking
You've got to get on Facebook, Jeff, you've got to get on Facebook, brother.
There's a lot of people not on Facebook, that's what I'm getting at. We need to toot our own horn more. I can't wait to watch this presentation, it's going to be great. So whatever you can do, Tammy, unconventionally get it out there, old-school style, whatever. I think it's great. All right. Thank you very much, ladies, good presentation. We will move on to item number three. It's Proposed Revised Board Policy 601: School District Curriculum and Instruction Goals. It's up for first reading. It's going to be by Lori Posh, Executive Director of Learning and Teaching, Carol Potter, Executive Director of Special Education and Student Services.
Good evening again. This is a policy that normally the Learning and Teaching Team brings forward to you to review. What a perfect tie-in tonight with our dyslexia presentation, because you're going to see some additions to this policy that Carol will share with you that tie in with our dyslexia. So the beginning portion of this policy remains pretty much the same. We did catch an oops that should have been in the last revision, and that's that we no longer have the Every Student Succeeds Act, but we now have the Minnesota Academic Standards and Federal Law. So that's the first change that's in there. We also have provided with you, for you, and I should say Carol has provided, a summary of the major changes in this policy. So as you scroll down, those changes really begin starting on page five, and I'm going to let Carol take over to share those with you.
Sure, thanks, Lori. And so everything you heard tonight in the dyslexia presentation is really contained within this Board Policy 601. So if you're looking at page five currently, under letter C, the numbers 1, 2, 3, 4 on that page are all about identifying. So numbers 1 and 2 are about identifying and screening our students for characteristics of dyslexia, as was mentioned earlier. And then number three, Lori, did you want to mention a little bit about number three? That one's just a little bit different regarding our English learners.
Yep, and we had
Can somebody make a little bit bigger that screen, please?
You good? I think Ryan's working on that for us. So in number three, the first portion of that remains the same from the revision, and we had talked about this part with the reading assessments being in English, and then it talks about and in the predominant languages where practical. And one of the things that we had talked about when this one came through before is that we have some resources that are available for assessments in Spanish, and we do not have as many that are available in Somali, but that our English language department, our multilingual department, has worked on those local assessments. The change that comes this time is a change that's in the MSBA recommendation, and that's to make sure that it's annually reported in the summary, those summary assessments, and that report is done every year. So that's the new addition in this one.
And Ryan, you can go to the next page then. These last pieces are really about our reporting to MDE, which we have been doing for the last two years. This year will be our third year in reporting our efforts to screen for dyslexia. And so we're reporting the number of students that are screened, how many we have screened for not only characteristics of dyslexia, but also any other reading kinds of concerns, and we track those regularly as well. And so we also need to notify in number five, a student identified as having a reading difficulty must be provided with, and we added that word at Board Development, targeted instruction. So it's alternate targeted instruction, and you heard a lot tonight about our SANDA curriculum. And as they mentioned, SANDA is not the only curriculum there is that is Orton-Gillingham based, but it has been a very strong curriculum for us. We really like what we're seeing in our students' growth and their progress, and so we will continue with that SANDA intervention. And I wanted to mention too, you're not going to see it in this policy. Well, one of the items in the presentation tonight, you know, they talked a lot about SANDA being in first grade, which is true across all first grades, and it's in many other places as well, but it's not the standalone reading curriculum. I want to be really clear that this is an intervention to what we do. So we have our core curriculum, so we're still teaching kids to write, we're still teaching kids all of the strategies that go with reading, where SANDA is really a phonics-based reading curriculum that is an intervention in addition to what we're doing in our core curriculum as well for kids. And so that is it in changes, really on the last page, Ryan, if you want to scroll down, it's just some statute changes on the very last page, but nothing else that is major in this policy, it's just the addition of the statutes around dyslexia. Do you have any questions regarding this? For either of you, Ryan?
Zach, we'll start with you. Al? Shannon?
No.
Les? I can't see Les because of the screen sharing.
No, I'm good, thank you.
You're good? Natalie?
No, thank you.
Monica?
Yes, of course. So, okay. So, Carol, in that part that you were reading, the last part, that one thing that caught my attention when I was looking at that is that, actually, the part that is not added, the part number three, this is reading assessment in English and in the predominant language of district students, where tractable, must identify and evaluate students' academic needs related to literacy. But I haven't seen anything that, so I would like you to explain a little bit better to me what is that policy, what is that part referring to? And I don't know that the district does evaluation of students, especially elementary students or kindergarten students, learning how to talk or read in general terms in other languages other than English. And thus, so could you explain a little bit more what is that about, the number three?
Yep, and Monica, I can take that one since EL falls within the Learning and Teaching Department. And we have spent a lot of time, in fact, in my board update that's coming out tomorrow, we actually are working with the Minnesota Department of Education, with the Minneapolis School District, around some of these pieces. And what it requires and what we know is that our assessments have to be about their English achievement, so how they're doing in reading English. However, in this part, it talks about the reading achievement in their native language or the, and that's not the exact words, I already closed it down for 616 to be ready, but as the key word in there is the word around applicable. I'm having trouble tonight with words. And when we look at our assessments, and Dr. Huff can talk more about this from the Assessment Committee, when we look at it, we're looking and what we're asked to report on is their English achievement, but we have the assessments available, so our star is available in Spanish. We have a lot of our reading resources that are available in Spanish. Our difficulty comes around the Somali language, because there is not a lot that is available that we can purchase or that we can use. So the assessments, like I said, are locally developed assessments that have been translated into our Somali language. We do have a lot available in Spanish, however.
So are you saying that we do assessments in Spanish?
We have them available, and that's up to our teachers to determine if we need to compare it. I know that we do that often at Clearview with our Spanish immersion program, of course, but we do have it available for other students as well to take in Spanish. It's not used very often, it's usually the English assessment that's given for reading.
So I was interested in this policy and specific in those in that part here, because I used to work with uh, because I, I used to work with, uh, parents and students and also with San Clara State, um, a, a speech pathology department, and about how children learn language in general. Um, and one of the, one of the anecdotes that I have from one of the kids that, um, the San Clara State students work with is a, is a parent that in their home spoke Spanish. Their child was a five-year-old, was assessed at the district in English, and was developed intervention in English for this student because it was delayed in English, uh, speaking and writing. But the district never did an assessment in Spanish, which was the dominant language at the home. The San Clara State people did the assessment in Spanish, and they started strengthening their Spanish, um, ability of this child, which made the child get better in English. And, and that has been a big lesson for me, and that every person that I speak with EL from the district, from this district and from other districts, not only from, not, not from EL, but from, from child development and, and, uh, uh, people specializing in, in, in how, how students learn to talk. They always tell me that this, the language that is stronger at home should be emphasized, and the assessment should be both, not because it's English or Spanish, but should be about the complete development of the language ability of the child, which is in the case of bilingual children in both languages. And I would say that is the same for other languages other than Spanish. So, I see this, I see this policy here, and I found, oh, that's interesting and, and good, but then you're telling me, I, I still don't understand how, what is what the policy says? Is the policy saying that we just have that available, and then anybody can use it? Or, so, again, is that, is that what the point three is? That we do have those tools available, but there is not, no more about it?
And Monica, I, I can't speak about your, the specific student that you're talking about. I'm not sure about that. Um, I, I agree with you 100%, and I think that's one of the things that we're working on in building our EL program and those pathways, is to really, um, look at, at those strengths and those, um, experiences that our students bring to us. I can tell you that right now, it's not fully in place, but it is part of our EL progression and EL plan for providing services. Because you are exactly right. We know that that, and we've even talked about the importance of instruction in home language. Um, part of the, the difficulty comes with, um, not having instructors who speak the languages at all levels and all grade levels. So, when we talk about providing the language and also doing that assessment, um, it's not, it's not a simple task to be able to evaluate it, to grade it, to do those pieces as well. So, I am in 100% agreement with you that this is an area that needs to continue to be developed. Um, it is something that we, that you approved in the 2019 revision of it, and it is in the works to continue to develop that assessment piece.
Okay, and last, I just want to say, if that sounds like we do have in place in policy what we need to and what I'm looking for, but it also sounds like we are not completely following our own policies, that we do have other barriers to follow our own policies because we don't have the resources available.
I would say you are correct in that, and our, our policies are based on MSBA recommendations, and, um, sometimes there works in progress to be able to fulfill.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, ladies. Nice presentation. I have no questions. Um, before we jump on to the next one, uh, Al and I had a little conversation where we had some time. Tammy, do, uh, I've been told we have six electronic billboards at our schools now?
Uh, five, I believe.
Five? And then Clearview is one of those five?
Yes.
Okay, well, maybe there's one up and coming. Um, can you assure me that they'll actually be active and changed during the whole month of December?
We are, as is coming in the board update this week, we are working on a process to actually have messages out to principals each month for the month, um, so that there can be some consistency in that. And then, for schools that don't have digital billboards, they have foundation signs, for example. There's no way to message on a foundation sign. Those messages can be put out in school newsletters. So, one way or another, that, those consistent messages can, can be pushed out at all of the schools.
Kind of like we have a play coming up, War of the Worlds, and it's on our billboards?
Well, that would, yeah, that would be more.
Tammy, Tammy, he's kidding. The answer is yes.
Thank you, Tammy. Thank you, Willie. All right. Thank you. I'm sorry for that side, uh, sidestep in there. Uh, next up is number four, Proposed Revised Board Policy 616: School District System Accountability. It's also up for first reading. It's gonna be done by Lori Posh, Executive Director of Learning and Teaching.
I'm gonna be tired of hearing from you tonight.
Never.
Our changes in 616, um, really stemmed from the legislation around World's Best Workforce, and we'll be giving you an update in January on World's Best Workforce. But a piece that's in that legislation talks about having, um, a World's Best Workforce Advisory Counselor, a council that will look at our World's Best Workforce pol- um, policy, not policy, but our, our plan, and help to monitor the progress towards that plan. As we looked at our committees and talked about, do we add a whole nother committee, or is there a place that we can weave these together? We really felt strongly that, um, the tasks that the Learning and Teaching Advisory Committee really connect nicely with what's being asked of us in the World's Best Workforce Advisory. So, the majority of the changes that you will see in this policy is the change from the name, and you can see it on page two is where the first one is, the name of the committee from the Learning and Teaching Advisory Committee to the Learning and Teaching slash World's Best Workforce Advisory Council. Um, that is the, the group that already has been working on having diverse representation, um, having, it meets almost all the requirements of what the statute says for World's Best Workforce about student and parent and administrator, um, representation. We just wanted to make sure that we called that name out in this committee as well. When you scroll down to page three and 2B, we also wanted to make sure that, that we called out that the input on annual instruction and curriculum improvement goals for recommendation to the school board will come not just from the committee, but will come through the superintendent or the superintendent's designee to make sure that the superintendent and cabinet have looked at those recommendations before they come to you. And then, um, scrolling down on page four, we added the S to Assistant Superintendents because both of them will be part of this committee. And we also added the Director of Title Programs, and that's Tina Larr currently. And Tina is helping to co-facilitate that World's Best Workforce Plan, so she will also be a committee member in this committee. And those are the changes being proposed in this, um, policy.
All right. Thank you, Lori. Zach, do you have any questions? Al? Shannon?
I'm good.
Les? Um, Natalie?
Uh, I just have a really nitty-gritty... It says the committee name twice in 3A, so just to note that.
I muted. Thank you for catching that.
You're welcome. I don't know how. Sometimes I can, I can be a good, uh, what is it called when you do that? You look at the...
Perfrider.
Perfrider. I can do it. I just don't know what it's called. It's too late, y'all. Okay. Thanks, Lori.
Monica?
Um... Is, is that, Lori, is this the, the... The, the same group that we have talked about of advisory, the advisory group that, uh, we talked about in the past about how do we get more representation? Is that the, that it was called like Equity Plan, Equity something before?
Um, nope. That's a different group. So, Ellen has one, a parent advisory group for the Equity Plan. Um, but this is the group that talks about new course proposals, that helps review the resources that we're looking at. Um, so, it's a, it's a pretty involved group.
No, it wasn't Equity. That, that, did this group had another name before?
It was just the Learning and Teaching Advisory Committee in the past.
Okay. Um, all right. So, no, I might, I might be getting a different, another different one. Thank you.
You good, Monica?
I am. Thanks.
Okay. All right. I have no questions either. Thank you for a nice presentation, Lori. Um, take the rest of the night off. Next up is, uh, item number five, Proposed Revised Board Policy 495: Nepotism in Employment. It's up for a second reading. It's gonna be by Shannon Haas, Chair of the Board Development Policy and Governance Committee.
Okay, this is our second reading on this, and we are looking to make two additions to this policy that we do, that are not on the MSBA policy, and they, the additions are on page two. We're looking to add the word, uh, cabinet members to include that in the exceptions, and that also that we would like the written approval shared with the board chair. Um, and are really looking for the Personnel Committee to be involved in exactly what that looks like then. So, I know we had a lot of discussion, uh, last meeting about this policy, I think, in general, um, as we are on a learning curve as to what is in this policy. Um, but I guess I'm looking tonight if anybody has any questions.
Any board member have a question?
I, I just want to say that we looked at that paragraph quite a bit, and the reason that it ended up the way that it ended up is because we were concerned. I think we initially said to, uh, have it looked at by the Personnel Committee and the Board Chair, which would then be a quorum of four people. So, we had to rewrite it so that it would be looked at and authored and okayed by the Personnel Committee, and then that okay would be shared with the Board Chair. You can't have a four-person committee making decisions. So, that's how we ended up with the language in there, just a clarification.
Correct.
Jeff, I have a question.
All right. Can you, okay, yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Natalie.
I just wonder, as far as a policy goes, is cabinet members, I mean, it, I don't know if the superintendent has always had a cabinet and it's always looked like this. Um, I'm just wondering if everybody would be, then be aware of what that means, and if that is a sustainable way to... You know, where, where does it stop and end with who is involved in this and who isn't? You know what I mean by that?
I would think the word cabinet members is pretty clear. Is that what you're asking about?
Yeah. I just, I don't know if the cabinet changes sometimes, and then I guess if you're on it, then if there's more people that are added to it, then I guess you're subject to the policy. But I don't know how fluid the cabinet is.
I think somebody else could jump in here. To me, I think it's pretty defined, but can somebody else could jump in?
So, I can jump in in terms of cabinet. It, it, I would tell you it's based basically on the superintendent. And, and so, if I look in the history of districts I've been a part of, I would tell you that it depends on, I'm not saying the changing of the guard. It depends on the cabinet structure. It depends on what that superintendent, what they're trying to do. Um, with that being said, one of the points of emphasis for us over the last, during my tenure is, um, to expand voice a, and to get some different perspectives. And, and so, we've added a few members to what I would say is cabinet. Are you, the way it was in the beginning, Natalie, just for, uh, just for some understanding, there used to be the executive team, and Tracy might need to correct me on this, but you had your execs, your, your executive part of cabinet, and we had this, this second group. And, and so, in terms of time and space and, and efficiency, we combined it all into one because, and that truly that was the cabinet. So, I think the name cabinet has always been the same, but it, it was split into two entities, and so, we just, instead of having it be execs and, and some other directors or some other executive, we just put it all together and call the cabinet. So, um, generally, I would tell you that cabinets remain kind of the same throughout, um, districts, but there could be some change in that structure when you change a superintendent or if there's a reason for it to change.
Yeah, I think.
I think our website also has names and pictures defining the superintendent and his cabinet.
It does.
I think that, that's me. I, I think what I was feeling there was, is it sustainable even after... Um, not that you're leaving us or that you're allowed to leave us, but even after, even after you would no longer be with the district. But then again, it's a, it's a cycle, and we'll see this again in what, three years, two years? So...
Also, having been around before, Willie.
Okay.
There was always a superintendent's cabinet.
Okay. Thank you for that history, everybody.
And Les? Les, you have a question?
I just, I think that, uh, the reason to, to add the cabinet is that if I, if I just sort of step back a little bit and, and look at, at a school district or any place like that of, of, of business, there are high-ranking people who are privy to information about upcoming employment opportunities before everyone else is. And they may, you know, they, in, in a bar, Sunday afternoon barbecue, they could tell one of their relatives that, uh, this, this, this is coming up. Uh, so, you might want to get, you, you apply. So, so, it's just, uh, the cabinet is used right now, and I think as a, as looking at a group of high-ranking officials who may find things out before other people. But it, but I think this will be fluid, and, and I want to sit down with the Personnel Committee, and we can talk about this. It, it would be fluid so that what we're trying to do is make sure that nobody winds up get, having an unfair advantage or employment or promotion in the district. And how best to sort of not treating everybody like they're going to, like they're bad people? But how do we put controls, uh, safeguards around everybody so that they don't accidentally, uh, create the perception of unfair advantage? So, I'll leave it at that, but I, we're gonna, this is really needs some work, uh, every, not that, I'm not talking about the policy itself. The concept needs a lot of discussion, a lot of work. We're not done with this yet. So, okay.
All right. Uh, Al, I'm gonna come back here. I'm gonna let Monica have her first, go ahead at first, okay? Monica?
So, last time, we talked at length about, um, the, kind of the oversight of this, eh, policy, and I was wondering where did you take off the, the, the discussion in your committee? Um, more specifically, um, last, last time, I was advocating for having, um, defining a periodically eh, review of the list of people that are in, in, in the list of, um, just checking who's the, what, what are the, the, the supervision or what are the relationships that exist? That list, as is defining the policy, only comes once when, when, when there is a hiring or, I believe. So, so I was wondering what, what did you, what was the discussion about having a periodically this, eh... Yeah, periodically checking of the, of that list?
Okay, so Tracy mentioned last time that the spreadsheet has been created, and then as they have new hires, they are adding and updating the spreadsheet. And I think it's then given to the Personnel Committee as to what that review process is looking like.
Yeah, right now, that spreadsheet is, is held and, and reviewed with Personnel anytime there's an addition to it. So, when we first enacted the policy, uh, we did a comprehensive review of all of those relationships to cabinet members and other employees, and we went through that list with Personnel Committee. And then, each time there is a, there's an addition of a staff member that has a special relationship to... uh, administrative personnel that goes on that list and I share that with Personnel Committee. And so that you know that that's coming to the consent agenda.
So, so yes, I, I am familiar with the process. I'm part of the Personnel Committee and I have been there since the process was first established. The question that I have for you as board members and for the, for, for that is that if, if nobody gets hired in two years, for example, and you change the people in Personnel Committee or people in the board, they don't even know what relationships exist or are part of that list. Nobody reviews that. Is that important? Is that important for you to know that? And then, and therefore if it is, that should be review like yearly, like once a year, you just check the list and, and understand. So that's, that's my point about that. That's what I wanted, that's what I would like you to discuss at the committee level. I don't have any specific suggestion of what should be. I'm part of the Personnel Committee, I can ask for it at any time. But I, but I would like you to think about that because you're not part of the Personnel Committee and you don't get access to that the same way. Um, so, so that's, that's what I was suggesting last time. Maybe I wasn't clear enough.
I lost you a little bit. I, I think that's part of the Personnel Committee that is reviewing that process, not the Board Policy Committee. But it's anytime we are adding or changing roles, that spreadsheet is being updated and reviewed.
That is correct. That's how it works currently. My question is, do you want that to be reviewed in a yearly basis in addition to every time that there is a change of roles or not?
Al, do you have something for that?
That would be an administrative procedure. In Personnel Committee, you say Tracy, we want to review this annually. And then Tracy brings it to Personnel Committee annually. It doesn't, it's not written in policy. The, the only changes that we're making in this policy, that the, the nepotism policy, it applies to all personnel in the district. Any, anyone in a reporting relationship, it doesn't have to be an executive or a cabinet member. All we're changing in here is it says, if you have reached the level of being a cabinet member, then this also applies. That it's going to go to the Personnel Committee and the Personnel Committee has to approve it. And the Board Chair is informed of that approval. Uh, but it isn't, that isn't necessarily the case if it is a, uh, building principal and a custodian. It doesn't, that doesn't have to be approved, that can be approved by the cabinet or by the superintendent. That doesn't have to go through Personnel Committee and uh, be, be, um, Board Chair informed. So that's really what we're looking at here, but how the, the whole concept of nepotism and how you want to handle it, that's something that needs to be decided in Personnel Committee. Yeah, in my mind.
Does that answer your concern Monica?
So I, I don't specifically have the specific concern about me. But when, when, when the policy was brought up to us for review, I felt that it was a concern about, 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 one thing is about how, uh, the community, how community perception works. And community perception works about, eh, we board members actually knowing about, in, and being in touch of what's happening. So I understand that this is an administrative decision and I don't, I'm not looking for impacting those administrative decisions. But if you are concerned about community perception, there is nothing in the policy that will address that eh, in the point that nothing, that, that board members in regular basis are not knowing about what, what this, eh, what, who is in the list basically. And I'm not saying that we have to discuss it and, and figure out if they are, I'm just saying, it's just, it's just defining a process that is discussed, is not, not even discussed, it's just presented to the, to the Personnel Committee once a year. That, that's, that's all what I, what I was suggesting because that's what my understanding was about some of the concerns that were brought up before. Again, I don't have any specific suggestion for the policy of language. I just wanted to bring this point to you board members to think about it. It just doesn't seem like what I'm saying, maybe it is not really clicking on you anything. So I will say, if that's the case, just leave it like that and then we, we just let it go.
Natalie, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I do. And I don't, I, I don't mean to throw a wrench into all of this, but I'm, I just have been feeling this about this policy and not really sure in, uh, exactly how to say it, but I think I am now. Why would, okay, I understand that as a board, we are the boss necessarily of, of Willie. And then of the superintendent. And the superintendent, uh, all of his cabinet is underneath him. I'm saying that, right? I'm, I'm saying that correctly, right? That's, that's the hierarchy here? So why do we need a board policy? Basically doing what it seems to me should be superintendent Jeff's job. Like, I think what I was trying to get at before was like, why stop at the cabinet? You know, like, how about also all the principals and, you know, they know things before as well. It just seems, it seems to me like overstep on our part to do anything but manage the superintendent with a board policy because of, because we're over him. You know, I understand that it's not just a board policy because it's, it's a school district policy. But we're talking about, you know, the, what the, what the board knows about these hirings, um, with nepotism within that. So uh, can anybody speak to that? I guess I haven't heard why, why cabinet members, why do we stop there? Why do we need to have them? Because what, why can't that be up to Willie or up just the superintendent who's over them?
Um, specifically are you asking? What, what part of it are you asking, I guess?
The main thing I'm asking is why is it? Why do we need a special, uh, policy for anybody but the superintendent? Because our purview is only to be over the superintendent, you know, and the budget and policy. Our purview is not to be, uh, over anyone else in the cabinet. And so that would be in the superintendent's, uh, you know, hiring and.
Uh, that isn't true. We have policies that say that kids can't smoke cigarettes. Well, if our policy, if the only thing that we're in charge of or we have a policy for is the superintendent, that we can take our entire policy manual and throw it out and just have a one.
I'm not talking about other, Al, I'm not talking about other policies. I'm just talking about this one. So my question.
You're singling this one out. And I'm saying that we have policies over all kinds of different things. Why would this one?
Talking about this one tonight, right?
Yes, we are, but it's in relationship. It's one policy in a policy manual. So I'm not going to single that one out. You're saying that we don't need any other policies other than the ones that deal with the superintendent.
Saying, can I finish what I was saying, please?
One person finish before the next one starts. Go ahead Natalie, you're up.
Yeah, I really, good night. I, um, what, what I'm confused at, and maybe this is where it's getting to, why do we stop at cabinet? Why is that the magic level where we stop?
Because those are the people that are privy to a lot of information. And they're boss of a lot of people. It's a reporting relationship piece. We don't stop at superintendent or at cabinet. If you're a principal and your wife is going to, if you're a principal and your wife or husband is going to teach, they can't teach in the same school. You can't have.
I understand.
A wife reporting. So that's not, that's stopping at the cabinet level.
All I'm talking about is this part of the policy right here where it just says, where we're changing it to not only just say the superintendent, but we're saying the superintendent and the superintendent's cabinet. I understand that the spreadsheet is for anybody and everybody and it, and it, and it relies on reporting, uh, who's reporting to whom and what the hierarchy is. But I, I'm just calling into question, why is, why is the cabinet so special? That they needed, that they need to be added to a policy when principals know, principals know everything at their board, at their school level and they could know beforehand as well. So.
And I would say that the cabinet has oversight over a large number of people. Each of the cabinet members have oversight over a large number of people and they also have oversight over much higher paying positions.
That's not a good enough answer for me, is all I'm saying. So I.
Go ahead, Nat, uh, Monica.
So Natalie, the initial policy was about the superintendent because when the superintendent doesn't have any other reporting relationship to any other person but the board.
Right.
So that, that was the, the, the reported relationship and that's what the initial policy is there for, for the superintendent. And so, so if your question is, why do we add cabinet members to that, uh, to, to, to that point? Because the relation, the reporting relationship of cabinet members goes to the superintendent directly. And we do want it to, to, is that, is that your question? Do we want it to override the superintendent and get more eh, privy or restricted by that?
They're getting stuck at the whole policy. Uh, when we're all done and said, I just want to ask.
Okay, but Monica was talking and I couldn't, I couldn't hear her at the last part because y'all were talking over her.
Sorry. Monica, go ahead and finish up.
I, I was asking Natalie if her question is, why do we add the cabinet to the policy? If the relationship of, if the supervisor relationship of the cabinet members is the superintendent.
We didn't. It was in there.
Okay. Al, can I talk to Monica?
Sure.
Please.
Sure, you can, but can we have a discussion? I'm sick and tired of this, nobody can talk stuff. You're asking questions. I was sitting in the Board Development Meeting with Shannon at the time that we did, and Zach at the time that we did this. I, I was involved in these discussions and you're sitting here and you're asking questions about why we added cabinet. We did not add cabinet to this policy. We added to the policy that Personnel Committee would review it. And the, then it would, they would also inform the Board Chair. The change is they would also inform the Board Chair. Because that, that didn't happen.
Hang on Al. Let, let Shannon talk right now, guys.
We did add the word cabinet. There's two things.
Are you muted?
Oh, yeah. There is two sections in here. One is that we're adding cabinet. The other one is that they're informing the, um, Board Chair. And so all done and said, everybody's chiming in opinions. What I'm, what I need to know is, we need to make a decision on, are we approving these two additions to the policy? If you want to have more work and more discussion about it, that's fine. But the Board Policy Committee is recommending at this point in time, we add these two additions to this policy. And I think I need to know, do we move this forward for a third reading? Are we in agreeance to at least that?
So.
Go ahead Natalie.
Uh, so here's the deal. When, when Monica said something, she, a light went on for me. But what just happened here in this meeting was that then people talked over her and now we're longer than we need to be because what, what Monica said is made sense. That we're, the hierarchy is then the superintendent and anyone who directly reports to the superintendent, which is what I'm understanding from what Monica is saying, is the cabinet. And that is as far as it goes. So the principals don't, uh, you know, the assistant superintendents are over the principals. So that's why we wouldn't include them. So that is, that makes sense to me. If I'm now understanding that correctly, that was where I was getting held up as, is it my, were you, is that what you were saying Monica?
Yes.
And you know, I'm going to be all done talking now because guess what? I get to have questions because I'm one-seventh of the board. So.
Yeah.
There you go.
Did Monica answer your question?
Yeah, that, that was my own, I mean, if I'm, if I'm understanding hierarchy correctly, that the only people that support, that report directly to the superintendent are on the cabinet, then I think it makes sense. But am I understanding that correctly? Is that the correct reporting?
In my, in my eyes it is.
Willie, is that, can, can the superintendent just make, because that, that was the, that's the only person that reports to you, right? It's just the cabinet?
The entire district reports to me.
I know, but only, but that's the only report to you.
Yep, but my immediate reports, yes, those are the only people that immediately report to me.
Thank you. I, I am a hundred percent then in favor of this and thank you for, thank you for that education.
Alright, this is the second reading. Let's have that discussion now because any other questions or concerns, please? Yeah, as Chair, go ahead and tell me what you want.
Typically, we move the third reading to the consent agenda because typically we're on, on consensus here. But I'm not sure if we are or not. Can I sort of get a thumbs up? Or are we agreeing to the two additions? For now, that this nepotism policy, we have those two items. So.
I guess give a thumbs up if you want it on consent. Give a thumbs down if you want to have further discussion when we do the third reading. I think that's what Shannon's alluding to.
Right, the third reading is a voting of approval to finalize it. But typically we're put it on a consent agenda. Do you not want it on a consent agenda?
Okay, Al.
Yep, Lass, go ahead.
All we're, I, all we're doing is changing some wording. Uh, the policy has already been in place. And we're just changing a, uh, and adding a reporting in a group of people who have to be, we have to report about. The policy itself is always open to review later on. We're just trying to get through this piece of it. Of the nepotism concept is clearly the word, if you look at the definition, it always has to do with unfair advantage and, and misuse of power. So we're, we're trying to, I mean, uh, what I think we should do is pass this. And then if we want to revisit the concept of the nepotism concept within the district, we should revisit that in another way. Uh, but we need to have a solid policy that says this is the process that assures us that, uh, at this level, no one is, has an unfair advantage at employment or promotion. I'm done.
Thank you Jeff. Uh, I, I do want to ask a question to be able to answer you Shannon. So what I was asking you, all of you about, about community perception, it didn't really make sense and it's not something that you're going to discuss in the committee. Is that, is that right?
Uh, two things here. One about the community perception is, I want to refer to the sentence that we had added last go-around that was on the MSBA policy. It talks about promoting transparency in our review and the decision-making process. So we added that sentence and as a board and as Personnel Committee, we need to make sure that we're, that that's being followed through, that we are going transparency.
So what you're saying, let me repeat your final understanding, is that that is something that we should discuss in Personnel Committee. But about the policy, you're not going to have further discussion about that. Is that correct?
Well, at this time, the Policy Committee is looking to add these two portions to the policy. Certainly can always continue to be reviewed. I think we're sort of passing it to the Personnel Committee saying here, this has come up with a, um, follow-through in our nepotism, in our district.
Okay, yeah, the, the reason why I'm asking you this is because if you're not going to have further discussion about that, I'm, I'm okay with the policy the way it is. I mean, with putting. I'm, I'm okay with the policy the way it is. I mean, with putting it in the consent agenda, but if you are going to have further discussion at the personnel, at the, uh, as your committee about this specific change here, then I would like to hear what was that, that discussion about, and then I will not like it to be in the consent agenda. So that's why I was asking that specific question. But if you, what you said is that the policy, at this moment, I mean, I understand that we can review later. Um, but at this moment, point, for from your point of view and from the point of view of the uh, board development is, is worrying, and then the parts of um, transparency of how do we execute transparency should be more discussed in a procedure level at Personnel Committee, then I'm, I'm also okay with that. I just wanted to know if that's what you're going to do and then I'm okay with having it in the consent agenda.
So that's my knowledge, yes. The, the Board Policy Committee is recommending moving forward to this nepotism policy at this moment in time. It can always be reviewed later, but right now we would like to move forward with this change.
All right, any other discussion before we leave this topic?
Thank you.
Okay, all right, um, that will be. Item number six is up next is the Proposed Revised Board Policy 203.2, Order of the Regular School Board Meeting. It's also up for a first reading. It's also going to be done by Shannon Haas, Chair of the Board Development Policy and Governance Committee. Go ahead, Shannon.
Okay.
So we took a look at this policy and as you may remember, um, approaching is our reorg meeting in January of, at which time, one of the things that we approve is the calendar for 2021 of the board meetings. And a little bit of history here, a few years ago, we were doing board meetings the first Wednesday, if I have this right, the first Wednesday and the third, oh, the second Wednesday and the fourth Thursday. Um, the Wednesday one was at Apollo and that was a work session and we had community input and the fourth Thursday was at City Hall. It didn't have community input. Um, I think it was very confusing to the public as to when was community input, was the meeting, on what week, was it Wednesday on, and was it on Thursday? Um, and also Thursday conflicted with um, a lot of other activities in the community. And I think that was the root of change, wanting to change it to Wednesdays. However, um, in doing so and changing it to Wednesdays, there was a conflict at City Hall on that fourth Wednesday. So then it got moved to the first and third Wednesdays. Well, now, uh, we don't even use City Hall. We have this beautiful district office that we are able to record and stream our board meetings and make them accessible to the community. So now, um, as we are going to release the new cal, or the new calendar year's meetings, um, it was discussed that should we move back to the first and the third, if I'm, sorry, I'm moving all this around. The second and the fourth, yeah, should we move back to the second and the fourth, keeping it on Wednesdays and of course, keeping it at the district office? And there are some months or different um, activities, um, financial activities where that might be a better approach to have it on the second and the fourth. Um, so we noted that in this policy 203.2 that we would like to start out with crossing out the date on there that it says the first Wednesday and the third Wednesday, crossing those off of this um, policy, but then also wanted to have the discussion about changing it to the second and fourth Wednesday. And so I'm looking for input and probably Al might be able to explain a little bit more about why that may be advantageous to move it to those dates.
Al, you can explain it first and then we'll go down the order for questions.
The, the only real reason to do that is that we have a lot of conflicts with the uh, the scheduling of votes for Finance Committee. Um, a lot of decisions and a lot of, a lot of due dates and things for decisions are the first of the month or the fifteenth of the month. And when we're meeting the first and the third week of the month, we're meeting at the same time those decisions are due and when you offset it, we're meeting on the week in between. Uh, and it, it always worked better. And I think I talked to Willie about it first and Willie, I think you made the comment that it seems like ever since we've made that switch, we've been out of sync.
And so with me, and I'm going to agree, Al, in terms of out of sync, at the same token, I, I've asked a couple of questions of just say Amy, um, because Al, when you, when you, when you and I had that conversation, for me, it was about finance. Okay, and and maybe I'm off about that, Al, but for me, that was my general um, recollection of things, so I, I said, I, there's been moments where we walk into finance and we're always trying to, how do we get information to the board and do we have a timely way of doing that? So then I asked Amy, I said, okay, Amy, am I, am I wrong with that or how, am I off with that? And so Amy, I don't know if you're technically, if you can still hear me to this question or what Al and I are talking about, but you responded to me just in a one-on-one. And so I just want to make sure that Al, and I, and maybe Al and Amy have had this conversation on the, on a, on a side conversation. If not, Al, I apologize, but I just want to make sure that what Amy said to me, she, make sure that she says it here. And and as a, as a, as an administration, um, and and we, we've been able to make all of it work, but I just wanted to make sure that that part about what has felt off to me that I agreed with Al, that Amy goes ahead and chimes in.
Yeah, I think the, the one that's, that's um, become problematic um, since we made the change is the September meeting. Um, for a while there, it seemed like we were um, struggling with some other meetings, but I'll talk about that in a minute because the part of that has changed with some efficiencies in our office. But the September meeting um, is a problem every year just because of the timing on the levy system and when they release, um, when the state releases their initial levy run, it's become a very tight timeline um, to try to squeeze a Board Finance Committee meeting in um, prior to it going to the board. And usually when Board Finance looks at it, it's not final. Um, you know, we're, we're still waiting for MBE to make adjustments. So that September meeting um, is really the one um, that's problematic. For a while, when we first switched, we were having some issues with those monthly financial and treasure reports being significantly delayed. Um, but we've actually caught up to that to where um, they're really where they should be. We've moved them from the second meeting to the first meeting, so we're really kind of at that, you know, the month that it takes to get statements and do the bank reconciliation. Um, we're really right where that would be. If we move the meetings, I don't know that we would be able to move that to the, you know, right now it's at the first meeting of the month. I don't think time-wise that we could move it to the fourth week. Um, for a while there, we were on the second meeting of like the second month, so we were always like six weeks behind. But we're really kind of right where we should be with that. That's um, caught up to itself and we've been able to move that from the second meeting up to the first meeting, um, as we, as we've had some staffing efficiencies in our office. So um, right now, I think from a financial standpoint, it's, it's really just that September one that um, could be advantageous to move that meeting.
All right, should we go around for questions? Everyone have enough input? Zach, do you have any questions or concerns? Al, anything else, Ted?
No, nope, I don't.
I don't really have any more to add to it. I just, and I don't really care if it's the first and third and second and fourth. It's just that it seems like we've been out of sync with finance. It seems like we always have um, deadlines coming up and it's always a struggle to get it, get those meetings in there because that deadline is either the first or the fifteenth. And so that's, that's all I really have. I, it doesn't matter to me though.
Jeff, can you hold on a second here?
Yeah, you'd be next, Indonesia.
As you're going around and asking people, can I just get an understanding of their feeling is then? Because we do need at the reorg meeting to create the calendar for the year. So if you're saying no questions, are you telling me that you would support moving it to the second and the fourth? Can I just get an understanding of that?
Let's get everybody to ask, ask their questions, that, and I'll give you the chance to, you know, because then everyone's heard everything that needs to be said. Um, anything you want to add though, as an individual?
No.
Les, any comments or concerns?
Uh, it, it's, it seemed to me that um, uh, the second Wednesday worked better before, I mean, this, uh, because it gets farther into the month, but you know, I don't run the district, so uh, I think the administration really should de- decide what is most convenient for them to have the board meet so they can get their work done and not be pressed for time or have to run around and get signatures, things like that. So I really think the staff ought to be telling us what the best meeting days should be. Okay, that's all.
Thank you, Les. Natalie, questions or concerns?
Um, not really. It'll be, I mean, oh, we're going to talk about the other thing later, so no, no questions or concerns on the policy.
Monica?
So I am hearing that um, Al and Superintendent Jet were talking about being out of sync. But then when Amy talked, who explained that they were out of sync for a while and they adjust and now finance is, is, is on sync. My concern will be that we change again and then they will be out of sync again because what I'm thinking when is the change. And it sounded by what Amy said, that the only meeting that we need to really look at really schedule is on the morning. Who's the one with the ring? Sorry. The, the things that the ring comes up every time that I talk. So um, then, then that'll be my concern about changing it again and then being out of sync. So I am with um, Les in, in that we should get a recommendation from the station, um, and I would like to hear more about what Amy will recommend specifically with, I don't want it to make them change again to see if they're going to be moving the reports, the reporting to the fourth Wednesday now.
Can I just jump in real quick?
Yes, please.
And so I, I heard Al say, um, he, all Al did was bring up a concern or a thought. And then I'm hearing others say, um, Dr. Green and some others say, okay, what does the administration think? I have not had this whole formal conversation with all of Cabinet. And so Shannon and Chair Polaris, it, I'd love to be able to have that conversation so that now you could, when you ask, what do we think as an administration, not just Amy, because I asked Amy because it was, for me, it was a, a finance, a finance piece. But I would also like to speak with the rest of the Cabinet and get all of our input on that and then be able to respond to um, to the board.
All right, um, Monica, were you done with your part? Okay, I guess it's my turn. I just wanted to add, I mean, my opinion for what it's worth. I'm an outgoing board member, but I don't really want to see us change 24 meetings. I'm kind of going back to the conversation I had with Amy. If the problem is September, let's, let's adjust September. Let's deal with the issue. Because I really do like it having, I like them on first and third, second and fourth. That part I don't really care about, but let's not change all of them just to rectify the problem in September because it sounds like we're in sync again, so. For what it's worth, um, thank you, Willie. I think that would be great to, uh, counting, coming back with a firm administration recommendation at the next board meeting. Is that possible?
Yep, it's possible. Can I send it just to Shannon? Um, I mean, I, I think Shannon.
Well, are you going to meet Shannon before then?
Actually, I'll see you on Monday.
Oh, okay.
For a one-on-one or what?
Mary will let you know about that.
Okay. Got it.
Yeah, go ahead, Al. You have a comment?
So what we're looking at here is a first reading on a policy change and the policy change is eliminating where it says the first week and the third week. And it's just leaving it open and so we should still make the policy change and the calendar recommendation comes forward for the uh,
Reorg.
For the reorganization meeting. We're trying to change the policies so that it's possible to change the calendar.
Yes.
That's the, but the, the, the actual recommendation for the calendar, we're not doing tonight.
No, we need to do three readings to cross off the fact that it says the first and the third. And then the other one is a time crunch too because we need to agree at what the reorg board meeting is going to release for eight.
Yes, but we can make the policy change and still keep the same dates we have now.
Correct.
And then change them at the second meeting in January, February, or whatever.
But we don't have to change the dates of the meeting. If we don't want to change the date of the meeting, we don't have to, but we should still change the policy.
Right, because until you change the policy, you're not changing the dates.
Correct.
Okay.
So we don't have to change the dates either way.
Right, right. Okay. Um, what are your thoughts, all board members? I mean, should a policy have a date tied to it or should that be more of a a procedure or a board decision? Because to change a date, I mean, now you're stuck with three readings to cha, I mean, we should have more freedom to change a date based on need.
The or, the title of the policy says the order of the school board meeting. So including exactly what dated that is, doesn't, might seem necessary to me.
Not, not in that policy. At least that's my thought.
Jeff, also the, one of the things that the board is required to do at the reorg meeting is to set the schedule for the year.
Yeah.
And by having it in the policy, there's no freedom to change that schedule. By taking it out, we have the ability to set the schedule at the beginning of the year for what we want it to be. It should have never been in there. I think someone was just trying to be clear without thinking that there were ramifications during so.
Yeah, it's unfortunate this wasn't up for a first reading in October. All right, any other questions or concerns? Anyone? Okay. All right, we will go on to item number seven. It's Achievement, Integration and Equity Committee's Recommendation for School Presentations to the Board. It's going to be done by Natalie Ringsmith, uh, Chair of the Achievement, Integration and Equity Committee, also Dr. Sylvia Huff, Executive Director of Research, Evaluation, Assessment and Enrollment.
Yeah, I thank you, um, Superintendent, uh, Superintendent Jeff. Uh, Superintendent Jeff, I'm, thank you, Superintendent, just in general. Oh, my gosh, 10 o'clock. Um, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Huff because she has a wonderful presentation laid out. I just want to say as we go into it, um, this has been a very inclusive process and it is thanks to Dr. Huff um, gathering information um, through her channels and then us talking and then this hopefully is the culmination um, before the end of the year here of um, what these school presentations um, will look like and will include um, going forward uh, for our principals. So take it away, Dr. Huff. Thank you.
Thanks, Natalie. Um, good evening, Chair Polaris, Superintendent Jet, members of the board. As Natalie mentioned, I will be providing a brief overview of the process that we've been using over the past few months to gather input in terms of what the school presentation should look like and then also pro, provide on behalf of the Achievement, Integration and Equity Committee our, the recommendation for the format and look and feel of the school presentations. Thanks, Ryan. So if you will recall, back in October, when the members of the school board went through the various activities during that work session, we ultimately landed on the purpose of the school presentations being to provide an authentic profile of each school to the board. Um, so that was as opposed to being a highlight reel or being primarily for the public. Um, it was landed and we came to a consensus that it is truly to provide an authentic profile with you all as the main audience. And so the second activity that we did that evening was determining the type of data that would be needed to achieve that particular purpose. And what we realized after going through the results of the charts that were completed by the school board members was that you all overwhelmingly indicated that all of the data on the, listed on those sheets were critical and. were critical and necessary. Um, however, at your suggestion, we also had the principals go through a similar activity and they categorized the data a bit differently. So on the following slides, you'll get a sense of how they prioritize the different data, um, that's available. In terms of the items that they deemed necessary for the school presentations, you'll see access to point O growth, building demographics, grad rates, star growth, attendance, climate survey results, and MCA achievement. Um, one thing to note is also that at the end of the activity, principals were able to indicate whether or not there was any data that wasn't listed on the sheet that they could think of that would be beneficial for the purpose of the school presentations. And it was brought to my attention that somehow MCA growth was not listed on there. That was my oversight. And so that was mentioned by a few of the principals. And so had that have been an item on the survey, I am quite confident that MCA growth also would be listed on necessary to include by the simple fact that multiple principals listed it in the open-ended response. Um, so you can see here just what they're deeming as critical. Before we go to the next slide, I'll also point or I'll also mention that we gave all principals the option to respond to all items and we asked them to look at it and think about it from a district perspective instead of just their individual building, knowing that we are trying to create some consistency across the presentations. And so that means that our elementary principals were able to indicate or categorize rather graduation rates and categorize ACT and other items. And so you'll see that play out a bit in some of the other, um, slides that are to come. But just keep that in mind. And go to the next one, please, Ryan. In terms of the data that they felt would be nice to include or supplemental, um, activities data, any type of failure rates or grade analyses, star achievement, um, MCA science, behavior data, access proficiency rates, and then also some of the talent development data. And then finally, in terms of the data that they feel is not necessary for school presentations, which would be on the next slide, please. Average GPA, immersion, advanced placement in ACT. And again, this is where I, it's important to note that principals could respond, like all principals could respond to all the data pieces. Because if you think about it, immersion is specific to two schools. So of course, principals that that is very relevant to are more likely to deem that critical than others. Same thing with things like AP and ACT. And so we know that especially for like ACT and AP, that is important to, again, a very important part of our secondary story. And it's crucial information to include, as you saw in Apollo's presentation, for example, and just being able to provide that information. So know that even though it's on the not needed screen, that does not mean that we will be recommending not presenting AP or ACT data. Based on the information from those previous slides, it seems as though our principals were very much so in favor of giving you all a sense of who their students are through the student demographics. Also wanting to have a focus on academic growth. So, um, one of the main examples of this was access 2.0. Um, if you recall, on the slide of the critical elements, at 100% of the principals said access 2.0 growth being critical. Um, however, eh, the, in terms of the access 2.0 achievement or proficiency, um, not as many principals deem that critical. However, it fell into that more supplementary category. So focusing on growth for star, MCA and access, but also recognizing the importance of discussing and interweaving in the MCA achievement into their presentation. Also wanting to make sure that attendance is called out during the school presentations and school climate. In our committee meetings or in the committee meetings, we went through all of this information and had conversations around the different data that falls into these categories. And it became even more apparent to us that those categories overlap the school improvement plans quite well, um, based on what the principals feel is necessary to highlight for their presentations. Um, presented on the screen as an example of the template for the our school that, excuse me, is an example of the template that our schools use for their SIPs. And it differs slightly between elementary and secondary, but for the most part, the categories are similar and are tied to world's best workforce as well as to our strategic plan. And so you can see in the headers that it has the district strategic goal areas that they overlap with identified. And basically, as the building's leadership teams complete their SIPs each year, for the different categories, they not only list what their goal is, but then also the strategies and processes that they would be using to achieve that particular goal. Um, Ryan, could you please go to the next slide? Thanks. So this is an example taken directly from Apollo's SIP. Um, I thought this would be a relevant example because we just saw Apollo's presentation and Alicia helped, excuse me, structured hers around the SIP through our conversations and meeting, um, with Dr. Putnam and myself and pulling her data. And so, for example, in the positive climate and culture category, um, their SEL goal in terms of achieving 70% of their students saying if they agree or strongly agree on a particular item. And so for any particular school, we have tech's presentation coming up. The items or the way that the goal that they would set in this particular category might not be exactly the same as the goal that Apollo would set. And so more than likely, they are using climate survey data, but maybe the items that they're focusing on aren't exactly the same as the items that Apollo chose, which means that you wouldn't necessarily get the data with those exact same questions that you receive from Apollo. But you would get the ones that are relevant to tech and that are most applicable to their SIP for that area. And you would also have a sense of the strategies that they would be implementing to see the, to work towards that goal. Um, and that would be the case for their data and the other areas as well. And so, um, math, literacy, college readiness, graduation rates and so forth. Ryan, you can continue, please. And that's just further examples of like the process and literacy. Um, and so you can see in the far right in terms of their grad, through graduation goal, the strategy was through bar. And we had brief conversation around bar as well during Alicia's presentation. And so you would get to hear not only and see not only the data that is truly relevant for that year, but then also the strategies would be highlighted in terms of the celebrations and the really cool things that are happening in the building to work towards those different So based on that, we are recommending that school presentations will incorporate data from the goal areas of the building SIP and making sure to focus on those areas that emerged from the principals' feedback, as well as from the conversations and data that we've gleaned through the discussions that we've had at board meetings and then also through the committee. Um, so of course, it would cover academic growth as well as achievement, school climate and career and college readiness. Um, the data would be not only included in that data packet that you receive attached to the agenda, but also in the presentation. And that, again, the strategies that will be implement or that are currently being implemented or that are in the plan and in the works will be highlighted to help give you all more context and a better sense of the work that's being done specifically around those goals. And for some reason, that final box isn't coming up. But that's okay. And I can just speak to it. You don't have to worry about it, Ryan. Um, so on the last slide, it is basically also indicating that in addition to the recommendations on the previous screen, um, we wanted to highlight the fact that when available, um, we will be providing at least three years' worth of data, um, because we heard very loud and clearly from this group that it's important to make sure that you have a more longitudinal sense of what's going on and have some other points of comparison. And so as long as the information is available, and I say that because like, for example, we didn't have MCAs last year. And so that would obviously provide a gap in that, um, trajectory. But as long as it's available and then as long as it can be compared across the years, we'll be providing at least three years' worth of data. And then also that principals will have, always have the option to include other information that helps them and allows them to better tell their story. Um, so that would be in the case of the immersion schools being able to incorporate their data and talk about, um, their goals and information around the immersion program. Or for the schools that want to highlight their talent development data, um, that is not something that we would ever limit or exclude. So principals do have flexibility to give you even more than necessarily what's just in the SIP. And lastly, in our conversations with the committee, another, um, point that we felt was very important to bring up is that we also understand that it's not just the data being provided to you all, but also the way in which it's being interpreted and discussed within the presentations and the importance of that. And so that's something that I take personal responsibility for and feel like that really falls in my camp in terms of accountability. And so, and working with, we've already started this too, meeting with the principals before their presentations to make sure that if they have any questions about anything, um, that it is more clearly discussed, that the data is being provided to them in a manner that is easy to explain with the context provided and then just making sure that I am there in terms of a support to help. So that way it is incorporated and not just kind of thrown at you all, um, and without the context. And I think that you've gotten really good examples of that from Principal Nutter as well as from Principal Fisher, who have both used more of the SIP framework in their recent presentations to provide you with examples of what that could potentially look like going forward. So with that, I will stop. And I don't know if I should turn it back over to you normally or if you just want to go ahead and open it up for discussion, but either way.
Natalie, you're chair of that. Do you have anything to add?
No, I mean, that's, that, no, I think opening it up at this point and to open it up, um, to kind of be clear about the reason that we're bringing this forward to you is it's, you know, we're, we gathered all the information and this is what we're noticing are the trends, um, and and how we'd like to move forward. So, you know, the discussion, of course, anybody can say anything at this point, but the discussion isn't like, oh, no, actually, let's redo the whole thing. Um, this is hopefully, you know, just us presenting, this is what everybody's saying. And then if you find any, if you have any questions about the whys or or the hows, um, you know, this is a good time to ask that, uh, if any board members have those questions.
Thank you, Natalie. Zach, you're up first. Any concerns or questions of Natalie and the Dr. Huff? Al? Shannon?
No.
Les?
Um, the only point is that the, I think that the information was laid out in terms of what's necessary and that we're not limiting the ability of a principal to, to hit the thing they they think is important to them. So, yeah, I I'm fine with this. I think it was a good process and good to actually sort of think about this and get some consistency in the presentation. So good. I'm done.
Thank you. Monica?
I I do want it to, you board members, to give us some validation. So I I am seeking for validation about do you re, do you think that we hit it and we got to what you were expecting and is this a good change or not? I I did, I I will, I'm part of the committee, but I would like to hear that. So that's.
Um, Zach, you want to respond to Monica? We'll just go through the list again.
I think it's incredibly thorough, very well done. And I'm concerned about the amount of staff time it may have taken to put this together because it's, it's that intense and thorough. Um, so that's, I, I like what's been done. Thank you.
Al?
Looks good to me. We'll just have to see it in action a few times before I can really evaluate it. I, I mean, that's the information that I'm looking for. So.
Shannon?
Yeah, I agree. I have to see it to see if it looks and feels different. I think the one thing that I was wanting was more data instead of just a few pick and choose that these look really good. Um, you know, we wanted everything. So it doesn't have to be that long in the presentation, but included in there emailed out to us would be great.
Thank you, Shannon. Les, you're next. Go ahead, Les.
Oh, yeah, I think that, um, some difference I have with the, uh, with the beginning is that while I agree it is, is to provide an authentic representation of, uh, of our school buildings, uh, we are representatives of the public. And if we were to, for example, uh, just get this information on our own and not share it with the public, it would be sort of absurd. I really do believe that what we're trying to do is illustrate the quality of the educational process that we're, that's being overseen by the school board. So it is for the public. Um, and and, uh, I think we have to remember that, uh, that overrides seven people, uh, in terms of, uh, of how we explain to the public what we do, what what this, what the, what this district is doing. So this, that's a nitpick, but I'm done.
Um, does that answer your concerns, Monica? Or did that answer your question?
Oh, and let me just, Monica, the point is, you guys did a great job. I want you to know that. I mean, you really did. Uh, I mean, it needed to be done and it was one of those things you just don't ever get to. And it really needed to be done. It took some staff time, but it was a great job and we all got to a point where now we can say, this makes sense to me. All right, now I'm done.
Right. Monica, my take on it is, um, I like what we've seen so far. I definitely liked the consistency. I was kind of shocked that two of the slides that were shown by the principals, less than 50% thought that discipline wasn't, wasn't a major thing. And to me, I need to know the bad along with the good because if there's discipline in a school, then something else might be broke that we need to be fixing. Same thing with, uh, the math and reading, 43% said it's supplemental. I I I hope that's in every school presentation because that's important to me as a board member. So, but I really like the direction you guys are bringing it. They're a lot, a lot better and they're more consistent. So that's my take on it.
And, um, Chair Polaris, just to respond to the discipline part of it, under the category, all racial and economic achievement gaps between students are closed. In that particular category of the SIP, buildings are able to create suspension goals. That's also where the math and literacy goals are written. And so the behavior data will still be a part of the presentation because that's one of the expectations as well. It's built into the SIP in terms of reducing those disparities.
So we will see it each present. Okay, that was my concern that, that we get back to too much fluff and I want to, I want to see it all. Okay, awesome. Um, go ahead.
Oh, oh, Monica, I think was going to say something. I'm sorry.
Okay, Monica?
So, thank you. I have a, a comment about context. So the, the thing that happens is that when we were looking at the data and at the data alone, eh, so, so some of the data, and we don't know why principals choose or not choose the data that they do, but some of the, the data needs context, like discipline, for example, Jeff, that is the one that you talk about, that needs context. So it's difficult to just put it out there as, as this is the number of, of, I don't know, suspension rate with the number of whatever, uh, because, because without the context, it's not, it's not understood the way that, that the principals are wanted to show it or that we should be understanding it. So the, the, the discussion that we had a little bit in the committee was about what provides that context and the, and what, and what it provides the continuity. And the SIP, the, the improvement plan is basically addressing that and the data goes tied to it. So I do think that we could still, uh, un- So I do think that we could still, uh, and maybe you as board members can tell us or tell, I mean, I don't know if it's a review as, as a committee or, or maybe it's just agenda planning of what committee will be, but you could maybe think about what data is specific you want to have being emailed to you or, um, in regular basis. Uh, that is something that we need to discuss. That might be a further discussion. But in terms of the presentations, it, what we're getting right now is, is, uh, what we're, what we're getting at is us having more context about the specific presentations, not to be able to compare schools with the schools because that, as Sylvia was explaining, might not be the same, but you will be able to complain, to, to compare the school within the three-year presentation with itself of how the school has moved towards the goals that the school has purposed for themselves. So you can see if that discipline or, um, was an issue for given a school in one year, what strategies have they done to improve in that specific area? So, and, and what other areas have emerged in those years that now they are defining new goals. The SIP plan for the school changes every year, but the presentations that we see at the schools are not every, we don't see the same, the schools every year. We see that if I'm not run every two years. That, that's the, the, the sequence that we're asking for the school to tell us what happened since the last time that we heard from you in this presentation. So that's just about context in that one.
Thank you very much for that, Monica. All right, um, Natalie, anything to conclude? Otherwise we're gonna wrap that up.
I think just to wrap up, you know, I think the, the diamond that came out of all of this polishing with, which I agree was a lot of work by a lot of people. Um, it took a lot of time and, and it, and with the diamond that we got is that it's the SIP, the school improvement plan that is really going to give us, and this is what I've learned by being on this committee, the school improvement plan, right, is tied to the strategic plan, which is tied to the world's best workforce, which is tied to the, and so, um, it really gives us such an overview. And I think for, for me anyway, when I, when I think about the school improvement plan being told for the last, you know, that this year and the, maybe the previous year if we hadn't heard it, it gives us a sense of a, of a district-wide look versus just school by school by school because our strategic plan is for the whole, um, district, right? But then there's, there's ways that we're doing it differently in each school. And so I think it, it brings us to a place that, that's exciting to think about. I don't know, it excites me. So I guess that's why I'm the chair of that committee. So thank you guys for all your hard work, everybody that, that spoke into this process.
All right. Thank you, Natalie. Thank you, Dr. Huff. Um, that will be the end of item number seven. Before I close out, I just wanted to say that tonight we got heated a couple of times and some people might've got talked over. Um, I enjoy the passion, but in the future, let's try to be kind. Uh, these kind of meetings are hard to do too because I probably miss somebody's hand up and all that kind of stuff. So, all right, it is 10:25. Our work session is now adjourned. Be safe and good night.